December 21st, 2020, GBOs regular meeting, last one of the year. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. I call this meeting order at 7:03. We'll start with a roll call. So my name is Mike Edgington. I am co-chair of Girdwood Board of Supervisors and Land Use Supervisor Jerry.
My name is Jerry Fox and I am co-chair also and I am the public, I am the roads and utilities supervisor.
Aaron.
Hi, I'm Erin Boone, Fire Department Supervisor.
Hi Brianna.
Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
And James.
James Glover, Public Safety Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. Does any board member have any disclosures for any items on the agenda tonight?
I was going to mention, I'm an engineer for the Forest Service and there's a, one of the items is about the Winter Creek Bridge and I know there was some discussion about possibly in the future that could be maintained by the Forest Service, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you very much. I do not see that as a, as a conflict. Did anyone disagree with that opinion? Anyone from the board? Hearing none, we will rule you as not in, not in conflict. Okay. So I'm just going through the minutes. Right, we've got to go through agenda revisions, so tonight's agenda, do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as written.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We'll do this by assent. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And now we go into the, into minutes. So December 2nd, 2020 work session, nonprofit rec grants application evaluation, the approval of the minutes there. Do I hear a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the December 2nd work session on nonprofit grants.
Thank you, Aaron. At a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks Brianna. Again, by voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now the November 16th regular meeting, minutes approval for that. I was not present, so I won't be voting on this.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 16th GBOs meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And that would be 4-0. And lastly, the November 16th, 2020 GBOs, do you see joint meeting minutes approval?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint meeting.
Wait a second?
I'll second.
Okay, again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I hear 4-0. Thank you very much. Announcements. So we have a long list of announcements tonight. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please keep your phone muted until called on to talk. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Land Use Trails and Public Safety Advisory Committees will hold officer elections at their first meeting in 2021, January. GBOs seats A and B are up for election in the April municipal election. The filing period is January the 15th through January the 29th in 2021 at the municipal clerk's office. The MOA GBOs quarterly meeting is scheduled for Monday, January the 25th at 4pm via Zoom. The Girdwood Clinic Project Team will be at the GBOs meeting on January the 18th to provide an update on the expansion and take feedback from the community. Look for the postcard that was mailed to everyone for more information. The Animal Control Advisory Board has been reviewing Title 17 provisions concerning animals in public places. You can review the proposed changes and provide input on the link provided in the agenda and we'll see what the minutes and I believe in the packet. Now move on to introductions. So Anna Henderson, I think we have a, we have a presentation from you.
Well, let me, let me.
Okay, oh sorry, we don't have a presentation. We have Anna Henderson to say hello to.
I like to introduce the board to Anna Henderson. She is the new city manager of the Miss Paddy of Anchorage and I think she is with us tonight and so there's always been a good close working relationship between GBOs and the municipal manager and, and I'd like to welcome Anna and allow you guys to ask any questions or just introduce yourself.
And I think you're on mute.
Yes, good evening. I was on mute. I do that all day. Just wanted to introduce myself and say hello. I've been on the job now two weeks, so already had a phone call with Kyle to talk about some of the Girdwood issues that you guys are interested in, so I'm just planning on listening in tonight, learning how, how things are going and feel free to ask me any questions and I'll, I'll try to answer. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Anna. Are there any questions from the board immediately? I'll just say hello, welcome and thank you very much for joining us tonight. Okay, so we'll move on to items on the agenda. So item number one is a presentation on the proposed tax increase, which is from the assessors office. Jack, I believe, can I hand it over to you?
Yeah, appreciate that. So my name is Jack Adamos. I am the municipal assessor for, for Anchorage, which also includes Girdwood. And so I did want to, I do have a presentation here and I can speak to most of it and go pretty quick. If right now is a good time to, just go ahead.
Sure. And just let me know if you want to change screens.
Okay, yeah, I'll just, I'll just go ahead with, go ahead and go off to the next slide. So what I'll be talking a little bit about in this presentation is just looking at what we do, which is what you can see in the slide. I'll then talk about values, exemptions, I'll briefly touch on new construction and then I'll ultimately get into the residential values, which is really the heart of today's message, which ultimately is spoiler, spoiler alert, we are looking to increase the residential values for Girdwood. So I'll just get back to this first slide here. You can see what we are responsible for as the division is we review exemptions, so we administer exemptions on a year-round basis and we also inspect property on a year-round basis. And if you ever do see someone with an MOA vest on that's measuring the side of your house, that is probably, that's probably us. We are required to inspect homes on a six-year cycle. And so that's typically what we'll be doing. Now you can also see January 1st, that's when all taxable value is assessed effectively, that's the lead date and it does kick off a series of dates. The first one that really does kick off is it really is the appeal season. That happens from about mid-January on about early June. And then we get into the valuation analysis where we start to review property and start to look to the coming tax year. So again, we are responsible for exemptions and missing exemptions and valuing property. Now if we could go to the next slide, I did break down, I was playing with data a little bit and having some interesting fun with this. But looking at the, the value, and this is taxable value and as well as exempt property. Anchorage as a whole, about 46, almost a 46 and a half billion dollars worth of value there. About 34 million, I'm sorry, 34 billion is taxable. And you can see here in the, the composition of it, about 68% of that value is taxable real property. 6% is personal property and then a little over a quarter is exempt, 26%. Now if you compare that to Girdwood, you can see that the pie is actually very different and I think that's actually really interesting. There's a lot more taxable real property at 84%, so we went from 68 to 84. Personal property is a little bit less at 4% and you can see there the exempt value, it's less than half of what it is for Anchorage wide. And what's interesting, if you look at the bowl, about 56% of the residential properties do receive a residential exemption and compare that to Girdwood, which is about 25%. And speaking of exemptions, we can go on to the next slide here. So exemptions, if you are a homeowner and you, you think you may qualify for an exemption, we encourage you to apply. You can, there's, there's several, several options potentially for you. You see that there's the state that's a required exemption from what the state statute says and there's a disabled veteran and then there's a senior citizen. Both are $150,000 reduced from your taxable value. And then there's the optional, meaning that the municipality chose to, chose to adopt this ordinance. It's 20% up to $50,000 of, off of the reduced taxable value. And a couple of things on it. So if you, you think you qualify, we, I really encourage you to go to our website, download the form. You can see on the right hand here, there's three snapshots of the forms and on there it does show you the bullet points of what the criteria you must meet to, to qualify. All of them are due March 15th of that tax year, so for taxer 2021, it'll be March 15th of 2021. So we got a few months for that. Lastly, with the savings, because you certainly can save quite a bit of money, but you can see at the bold of that last bullet point, it's also your responsibility to notify us if there is any changes. And speaking of that, if we could go to the next slide. We are doing a exemption review on exemptions for that. We do have a lot of exemptions. We have over 40,000 exemptions to, to look at and review. And so what we have been doing, and I encourage you to tell other people this, I don't want this to be a secret, that we are reviewing exemptions. We first take our exemption data set, we compare it to the PFD, we look at addresses, we look at rentals, anything that we think may jeopardize the eligibility of that. Once we have that, we then flag properties that may not be eligible and then we start to work with that property owner to help verify that, yes, it is, they are eligible. And then finally, we also make a determination. Now for 2020, for this year, we have identified over 1,900 properties that we will plan to follow up on, but we don't send all 1,900 right away. We just don't have the team for that and we want to make sure that we do have good customer service with those individuals. So we just sent a batch, a little over 250 just recently with that. So far, we've removed over 380 exemptions this year and when we do remove exemptions, we do look at the last six years of eligibility. And then finally, I just want to say, we haven't sent it yet. We do plan to send it here within the next week, sending over 1,000 applications to seniors that we think may qualify. And so really at the end of the day, the story here is we, we want to try and make things equitable. So if you do qualify, we want to ensure that you do get the exemption and if you don't qualify, want to make sure that you don't get it. Just trying to, to do that. Okay, so I talked a little about value, I talked a little bit about exemptions. I'm just going to briefly talk about new construction. That can always be interesting. You can go to that next slide. That was just a transition slide. Here's looking at the municipality of Anchorage as a whole with new construction and it's from 2017 to 2020, you can see it varies, hovers around the 200 million to almost $250 million of new construction. You can see it's been kind of up and down with that. We just, we're just starting to get the tax year 2021 value, so we don't have them yet, but we'll be very close. So the timing of that is a couple of weeks behind. But if you do look at Girdwood, which is the next slide, I thought that was kind of interesting. Obviously the magnitude and that sentence on different chart because it's, we're, you know, looking at millions now instead of 250 million, we're looking anywhere from, you know, the last, you know, from 2017 to 2020, anywhere from about 6 million, almost to 10 million. I did find it very interesting, 2018, 19 and 2020 did have a increasing new construction for, for Girdwood. I think some of that could be just a little bit of new interest with everything, but I'm not sure what this year is going to bring either. It might be a little bit, little bit down with that. So if we could move on to the next slide, and this is really to the heart of today's message, which is really at the end of the day, we are looking to increase values for residential properties. For single-family homes, at the lower end, we're looking to increase 7%. At the upper end, we're looking to increase, increase as much as 18. However, that would be very unlikely. Really, at the, you could probably split that and be right there in the 11 to 12% is probably what you would expect to, to see for an increase in the, in your, in the single-family homes. Condos, they're also moving up, but the magnitude not as much, anywhere from 2.5 to 12.5 and then duplex, triplex, a little bit more narrowed, 2.5 to 7.5%. So that's what we're looking to do. Really, at the end of the day, why the increase? And there are several reasons for, for, for this. So early this year, we did get some person coming towards us and we were getting some word that we might be a little bit low with the, with the value. So in some ways, we might be playing catch-up from last year. But we also were analyzing the data from this year and the sales, the listings, they both also point towards increasing the value. And then we're in a very unique time right now. We're, we're in a pandemic and so some of that really does give us a pause for concern. And so maybe just looking at from nationally, at least nationally, vocation homes have, have really spiked us this last year. And you can see there's several reasons. Ability to work remote, so I think some people are starting to find new attraction to places that they like to live, that is livable. Mortgage rates, those have historic unprecedented lows. We have a reduction to recreational options, so people can't go to the malls easily or go to the theater. It's a lot more outdoors oriented as far as the recreational. And I think people are just wanting to have more space. I've heard that more than once, that people are just wanting to have more. A little yard perhaps, another room, maybe an office room. And finally, we've also been hearing that we've, we've been seeing increased market activity. It seems to be there's a lack of inventory, there's a low days in market. So, so all of this is what I just said, really all these have a upward, upward influence on prices. Next slide. So here residential ratios, and so there, there's two of them here. There's the average assessed value of listings and the average list price. Now listings, we don't use listings to value real estate. But we do use listings to give us a good gauge or a good gut check and where we're at. But you can see here 521,900 is the average value of listings divided by the average list price of 592,400. Gives us a ratio about 88. Typically, we like to see the ratio anywhere from about 93, 94% is typically what we've historically seen. So I think 88% is, you know, lower than obviously. The next one is the sale ratio and this is what we typically use as kind of our report card, so to speak. Average assessed value of disclosed sales at 582,600 divided by the average sale price of 608. 96%, that's typically right where we want to be for that. So again, the, the data suggesting that increase in value is warranted. At the, at the end of the day though, what, what does this really mean? And I think that's what this next slide is trying to, to portray here. The bowl, which is really tax district 1 and 3, so now we're certain to shift away from value and just quickly talk about the mill rate for, for the actual taxes. So the tax are sick 1 and 3, 17.1 mills for 2020 last year. You can see there's school, fire, roads, drainage, police, parks and rec. If you compare that to Girdwood, there's only two groups there. There's the school, which is that area-wide school, 7.75 mills last year. But then there's also the area levy of 5.3. So 12.93 mills, which is obviously lower than 17.1 to begin with. But the other thing really, the main point of this is, there's two things. If values increase, there can be kind of a one or the other or a combination. Either the area levy would, would stay the same and there would be more revenue for that, or the area levy could be reduced or some combination of those two. So yeah, maybe the values are going up 10, 11%, maybe 12%. But at the same time, the effective tax bill might not be going up by that much of a percent either. So something to keep in mind with that when things are, when values are coming out here in a couple of weeks. So finally, I do want to talk about the next coming weeks and what's really going to be happening. And like I said, January 1 is the snapshot, that's the lead date, when we have to kick up values. And then we need to notice everyone on or before January 15th by code. This year, we're looking to, we're going to try to send it January 12th. I don't think I updated that. And then hopefully have a appeal deadline of January 11th. We will be, on your, on your valuation notice that you will receive, there will be a box in there that says this is when the appeal deadline is. So keep in mind of that. It's 30 days since, from the notice that was sent. And you can see there that second line there, you have a 30-day informal review period and you see it goes from green, yellow, orange to red. The reason for that is the earlier the better. If you have any questions with the, with your value, by all means, please come talk to us. It, it helps us as well to really get a lot of feedback as well as a lot of questions and problems can be resolved during this informal review period. If, if we can't do anything or if there's, there's anything else, then you can easily go ahead and file an appeal. Again, that's 30 days after. It's probably going to be February 11th this year. And you would then, you know, work one-on-one. And again, well over majority of appeals are resolved without a Board of Equalization here. So I, at the end of the day, so you can see maybe the next slide does have that valuation notice on there. Again, it has the appeal date. It has our phone number, 343-6500 is our phone number. That's the appeal hotline number. It's off right now, but very soon it will be live. And then there's also, if you flip on the backside of that card, there's a lot of helpful information on there as well. So I went through this very quickly. I understand that. But again, the main point is I want to ensure that when you do get your valuation notice, that you're not suddenly surprised that the values are increasing a little bit.
Thank you, Jack. Any questions from board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Erin.
Um, Jack, I wanted to thank you for coming down to talk to us about this or, you know, via Zoom. I'm just curious because I've, I know I have and several other property owners over the past few years have seen increases in the value and I'm just curious, like what is different this year that is causing you to come out and tell us about it beforehand, which is nice.
I, I think a couple of things. So last year, we did increase mostly land, vacant land is what we increased last year. This year, we were looking at really the improved section as well, so land and building and just really noticing that we needed to make a little bit bigger of a move than we did last year. So I know last year, there's a, there's some of the land percent-wise did increase by a fair amount. But a lot of that was relatively smaller properties that didn't have a large nominal increase, so to speak. When we start to talk improved values, you start to see that nominal increase being a little bit higher as well. So I think some of that really prompted at least me being the assessor to want to try to let everybody know. And I, I think it's been so far well received. I think I'm going to try to do this more often with other pockets and other community council meetings or like this one as well. So I hope that mostly answers your question.
Yeah, I guess a little bit of a follow-up. For properties that have seen a substantial increase in the last few years, are you, I mean, is it across the board kind of a 11 to 12% increase or is it, are you looking at one by one and considering the increases that they may have had recently and how accurate they might be?
Yeah, so again, I think most of the increases historically was a lot of vacant land. That was really a lot of targeted areas. So it wasn't just across the board with that. This is a little bit more across the board, so it's a, it's a broader scale with that. We, we did consider the values and the increases from the prior years as well with, with this. But generally, we did, we did make sure, or generally the way it's, it works is that we, we did can take that into consideration with that, so.
Okay, thanks. And I was just curious also, what is, what is personal property? Like what is an example of that, that?
Yeah, good, good, good question. And it's probably why it's a little bit smaller sliver, slice of the pie for, for Girdwood compared. So it can be a variety of things, but typically it's going to be inventory, like you go to Walmart and you get inventory. It's going to be, you know, everything on the shelves that's able to sell. If you walk into a hotel, anything that's not affixed to the building is generally going to be personal property. So it's going to be your beds, it's going to be your dressers, furniture, all of that stuff. Machinery and equipment, so if it's not licensed on the road, for example, your skid steer. So it took quite a bit.
So despite the name, personal property is really business property?
That is correct.
Yep. Any other questions from the supervisors?
Jerry's got his hand up.
All right, Jerry.
Yeah, I, Hal, could you just go back to the mill rate slide? It's like two or three back.
Yeah, I'll get there in a second. There it is.
And so, yeah, this is kind of educational for the people that are listening from Girdwood. Again, the area levy, we as the Board of Supervisors control that amount and we advise the assembly and they usually take our advice and that's, that number has our mill rate. Maximum mill rate is six mills, but we've been, well, before police, we were, what, about four? And then after police, we've been up in the five, mid-fives. But we have not really increased the amount we're spending here in Girdwood over the last four or five years. I would say more than a couple percent. The police was the big increase we've had here, but the, where your tax rates are going to go up is you're going to be paying more for school. And I just wanted to kind of emphasize that, that if you add it like Mike has said in an email, if you have 11% increase, it's really only going to be probably about 60% of the 11% if that makes any sense, because the school is 60% of our tax. Did I state that right, Mike?
Yes, yeah. So basically, as Jack mentioned earlier, the, if the overall assessed value goes up, the, the area levy will get squished because we spend a fixed amount of money, not a percentage.
Yes. Thanks, that's all I had to say.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other questions from any supervisors? If not, I have one more. You mentioned, Jack, that there were various pockets around the municipality that you were speaking to. Are there, are there sort of other tax districts that are also having similar or larger assessed increases or is Girdwood sort of an outlier from that point of view?
For this year, you're the outlier. I would say typically it can vary. Three years ago, Hillside, we did a lot of, of changes with, with her modeling, neighborhood modeling and that did result in some significant changes as well, you know, plus 10. And that did result in some significant changes as well, you know, plus 10% changes to that. Last year, we were pretty conservative and/or nothing really too significant. Again, Girdwood did see a little bit of increase in land. Eagle River, for, for a couple of years, we were increasing some of the residential land there. So every year, we, we do try to look at everything. And it really can be just a function of maybe we got more data. That could be a function of the market moving, or it could be a combination of those and several other factors.
And the primary issue here this year is the market moving?
Yeah, I would say so. And again, we probably are playing catch-up by a little bit as well. And by how much, it's, it's hard to tell. We are a non-disclosure state. So we don't, we don't get all the sales disclosed to us. Typically, it's about 30% of the sales that occurred, we do see.
Okay. And to, I think you partially made this point in answer to Erin, but just to be clear, when you say something, let's say it's this 10% or 11% increase, that's not an across-the-board increase. It's going to, some properties are going to go up by more, some properties are going to go up by less. It depends on the exact characteristics of the, of the property. Is that the right way to think about it?
Yeah, that, that is the right way. So typically, like averages, right? Averages are just that. Typically, it's hopefully a bell curve, where you, where you have some being falling on the higher side and some falling on the lower side of that.
Okay. So it's theoretically possible that some properties may actually go down in assessed value, although probably not?
Probably not for Girdwood. Like, like I did show you in the first one, you know, the range was anywhere from, at least for, for single family, and we're from seven to 18. And that's, you know, seven's at the very low end. That's probably three standard deviations out.
Okay.
And obviously the 18 as well.
Yep. Okay. If there are no more questions from supervisors, I'll open up to, to the public and other attendees. If you put your hand up, if you have a question. Kyle?
Thank you. I spent a lot of time looking at these tax rates as we always, creating the budgets each year for the service area. And I have one question, but I want to point out with that area levy there for residents watching, inside that area levy is fire, road and drainage, police, and parks and rec. And you can see, as compared to districts one and three, we pay almost half of what those districts pay for their mil rate on there. So I would say Girdwood does a fairly good job of, of getting all the basic and sort of critical services for the valley at half the mil rate of what you might find in downtown Anchorage. Jack, a question for you related to that is, I don't, I noticed there's no area-wide on here, which I know is pretty substantially, most years it's a rebate. But does, do you see this year with the lack of revenues from bed taxes and alcohol taxes and things like that, that area-wide taxes will go up for residential taxpayers?
That is a really good question that I really don't know or can't answer. I mean, if I, if I were to start to rattle off a bunch of things, I think I'd probably be wrong in what will happen.
Yeah.
We are, yeah, I mean, bed revenue is down, but there's others that are, that are up. You know, marijuana tax, I think last year was up at least. I don't know what 2020 will bring with that. So that'll be interesting. We, yeah, there's the care's money. I have no idea if that would have any impact on any of that. That's outside of my scope of expertise and knowledge. I do think, though, overall, Anchorage is going to see a slight increase, at least for, for, for my area where I can speak, is looking to have also an increase as well to, at least residential property. So that will typically have a downward pressure on the mil rate overall, which will hopefully then, you know, push down the mil rate for the school, although I think the school has a few things going on, too.
My recollection is from the OMB documents that they were looking at about 0.4 mil rate for area-wide. But that's obviously before the changes, the assessment, that's before first-quarter revisions, that's before they have all the information they need to predict next year's income.
Okay. Good.
Probably really going to be in March, when, when they get set, that things will really become more clear.
Any other questions from the public, from the community?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just kind of point out to Jack and also Anna. There are some of us in Girdwood that are really trying to understand the budget and how, how, where the revenue is spent. And I know that a member of Girdwood has submitted a public records request to the municipality legal department. And I would like you to take note of this number. It's a service request number 204215. The date that that was submitted was on 11/27/2020. And it was a request to get a better understanding of, of the revenues that are generated out of Girdwood. And so we should have had a 10-day response. And we're, we're well, we're well past that. So now we're just kind of branching out, letting more people know that there, there is a current request to validate the information that was submitted. So we would, we would like to be able to understand the way that the money is spent, and especially in regards to property tax assessment. I do understand that that is where Girdwood makes its money, essentially. So anyway, if you guys would follow up so that we have the information that we need to, for our community, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that point, I know I've asked the same questions at, at various meetings with the municipality. And generally, we've hit the roadblock that there are very few, a very small number of businesses in Girdwood that sort of have an outside influence on, outsized influence on some of those tax revenues. For example, the hotel is by far the majority of the bed tax. The Tesoro is basically all of the gas tax numbers. So I think the prohibition on releasing information which can identify individual businesses has kind of hurt us there. However, the one area that I think there's a lot of opaqueness is the school. I think the actual costs of providing services in Girdwood, there's a lot of misunderstanding around that. So that's one area where I know we're not, you're not prohibited from releasing the numbers due to commercial sensitivity. Emily, I see your hand is up as well.
Yeah, considering you guys just talking about the budget and how much this stuff was costing you guys, how much was the budget for just this single assessment? What was the actual money set aside for this? And then was there any social outreach budget for this?
Is that, that's a question for Jack?
Yeah, yeah, that's a question for Jack, sorry.
Yeah, so are you saying a budget for, for this outreach?
Yes, and this assessment in total?
So ours, so we have, on average, for, for our budget is around $4 million to do all of the entire municipality for assessments. So that's 90-plus thousand of records. I forget what the math is, but I forget what that comes to. I think $20 maybe, a parcel, something like that. So I can't, I can't break that down and say what the cost was to Girdwood specifically for that. It's largely just baked in from that number. As far as tonight, what's that?
I said, no worries. That works for a total of what I wanted to ask. And then the second question was, do you think that this is a service that should be provided to the municipality for residents as a whole? Or do you think that this is an optional service?
As far as assessment goes?
Yes.
Well, I would say, I would refer to the state statute that we are required by state statute to assess the full and true value every year. So I don't know if it's really an option at this point in time.
Thank you very much. Those are all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. So I'd like, thank you very much indeed, Jack, for coming down virtually and presenting. This is the first time I've seen this presentation, and I do appreciate it. I'm not sure I'll appreciate it so much when I get the, the postcard in the mail, but at least I'll understand where that comes from.
Yeah, well, I do appreciate it. And for, for time, I do have another community council meeting I have to run off and jet to. So I do thank you for letting me go early in this meeting, and I appreciate your time. If there's any other questions, feel free to just either email me or, you know, how to contact me now. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we'll now move on to item number two in the agenda, which is an update on the Seward Highway project from our Post 75 to 90, which is presented by Sean Baskey from DOT Project Management.
Good evening. Am I coming through all right?
Sound great, Sean. Thank you.
Sean, I, we have a presentation, I think, sent to us unless it's changed. I can switch. No, yeah, no, that's perfect. Okay. So yeah, Sean Baskey, I'm a project manager with the Department of Transportation. So we've got about 14 project managers here in the central region. So I cover about 15 to 20 projects in any particular time. You guys have seen me out here for, with a number of different projects. So I did the Seward Highway 99 to 100 sections. So just, just south or east of Byrd there a little bit, with some additional extensions of some passing lanes and some other things. And then I was the project manager for a little bit on that section through Indian and Byrd, through the 100 to 105, which is being construction, being constructed right now. But it got passed on to another project manager. And then I've also, of course, been the project manager for the Seward Highway 75 to 90 Phase One project, which you guys have been seeing on your, on your door for the last three years or so. So this is a perfect slide to kind of show Phase One and Phase Two. So Phase Two, which is the project I'm talking about now, is that donut hole in the middle there, next to the Portage Glacier Highway there. So a couple of significant features in that section. Obviously, the, the Portage Glacier Highway intersection itself. Then we've got the 20-mile boat launch. And then the Alaska Portage Railroad Station, that's off to the, off to the east there. And then the Alaska Wildlife Conservation Center access. So there's a number of different things that we've got to do there. But first, before we head into some other Phase Two stuff, I know we've heard a lot from the public about Phase One stuff. Is there any questions or concerns about what happened in Phase One? Because we're, we're about to hit you guys with Phase Two.
I'm not seeing any questions and no hands up.
I have a question.
Sure, absolutely.
Chief Weston.
Is, do you know when the boat launch at Gunmount will be put back in so we can respond to emergencies in the inlet?
I, my understanding was that the gun mount was placed with Phase One, so it should be in there right now. If it's not, then they should be back in there early next year. I can, I can touch base with our construction project engineer. So I'm on the design side, so I'm not familiar with every little piece of, you know, that nearly 15-mile project. But I can, I can surely check in with our construction staff and get an answer back for you.
Great, thank you.
You can continue. I don't see any other hands up.
All right. So yes, obviously, we've got a number of things that we're trying to address with this project. It's a rehabilitation project. One of the major things, of course, is safety. You know, generally, along the corridor, we've had a number of crashes. There's been, you know, the safety corridor that was installed to try to address those crashes, certainly between Girdwood and Anchorage, but then it extended a little bit to the south to cover at least one of the curves that we were addressing with Phase One. So now we've got a smoother curve through there, so that should hopefully be safer. And then, you know, we just, a couple of notes there on some safety statistics that we did throughout the, the corridor. You know, every crash is one too many, certainly. But, you know, we've had a number of crashes that have impacted all of our families, friends, and neighbors. And so, you know, we're trying to address that with this project. Prior to Phase One going in, we didn't have any passing lanes. We had a lot of parking that was going on with hooligan fishing, you know, with a lot of people parking on the shoulders of the highways, making those congested, congested and causing a lot of safety concerns. Luckily, Phase One installed a 100-car parking lot. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of those cars pulling into that parking lot this coming year. And then, of course, you know, in, in the Portage curve area, we've had a number of, of crashes and more recently, some fatalities. So we'll, we'll try to address a number of those things that hopefully reduces those number of crashes and, and the loss of some of our, our friends and family and neighbors. So, you know, there's obviously a number of things that we have to address on the roadside as well. You know, I, I know that when I drive over those bridges, it feels like I'm going over a complete rumble strip. There's a reason for that. Those bridges were built just after the 64 quake. So with Phase Two of the project, we're going to be reconstructing five bridges. Phase One reconstructed three bridges, and then we, we rehabilitated the one at the base of the pass there. Because that was Ingram Creek, and that was built in 1985. So it's still got some, some significant life left in it. So with Phase Two, we're going to be replacing five bridges, which is a significant cost and a significant effort. And then obviously, on the roadside of things, certainly during construction, you guys, we certainly heard about it. There were some road maintenance things throughout the construction area, specifically, you know, and that, that's really on the contractor to keep the, the road maintained while they've got ownership of it. But throughout that curve in Phase Two, we certainly have some other things that we need to address. So we're adding that into the project to go in and patch some of the asphalt. And then the bridges, we're going to put it on the contractor to go out and maintain some of those bridges with some, basically, pothole patching. It's not going to be significantly better than what you see out there, but, you know, those bridges are only going to be in service for another two or three years. And so instead of spending what would cost about, you know, $2, $3, $4 million to resurface them, just to tear them down in a couple of years, we're going to have to live with some additional degradation on those bridges and, you know, maybe some slower speeds through there. So that kind of takes us to the design elements. When, some total between Phase One and Phase Two, we've got 15 miles of repaving everything. We're replacing eight bridges and rehabilitating one bridge, like I mentioned before. But really, this section, this, this next phase is just five bridges. There is a separate project put on by the US Forest Service that's going to have a separated pathway throughout a majority of Phase Two of the project, or all of Phase Two of the project, and then extending down towards Ingram Creek at the base of the pass. And so you'll see another section of pathway being added with that project. They want a grant. And then we've agreed to install some crossings on our bridges as mitigation for some of the impacts that we're having to some other areas. And then one of the big things is we're going to be straightening the curve around the, around the Portage Glacier Highway. And then we're adding in about five miles of passing lanes in a number of different locations. Some of those went in with Phase One already, but total five miles of passing lanes. So I think this next figure, you know, is basically Phase One. We can skip on to the next one, which we've already covered that. So Phase Two, this kind of neatly shows the realignment of the curve in the Portage Glacier Highway area and the Wildlife Conservation Center. And so you'll see that we've got a much better swoop through the area. And so it'll allow drivers to, to stay at the highway speed that they're expecting to drive around that corner and not be forced to brake so hard. We'll make some great improvements to the, to the intersection with the Portage Glacier Highway. We'll set ourselves up for potential grade raises if ever a project comes through at the Portage Glacier Highway. So we'll set things everything everything up nice and high and then come down to the at-grade crossing. So at some point in time, we might do a grade raise there. But then, you know, the major impact throughout this area for sure is going to be that realignment. And that'll be a great improvement, I know from my side, you know, driving through the area. So that kind of that's kind of nice overview. Is there any questions about any of that realignment? Graphic?
I just have one quick question on that. When, sure. After the construction here, the two things I noticed doesn't show a separation of lanes around the Portage Glacier Road turnoff. Is that going to be there?
Yeah, so this is just a, well, there will not be a separation, but there will be a a striped median.
Okay.
So there'll be extra space.
Right, understood. And will there be parking areas around the both Placer River and the overflow?
So there's going to be a number of improvements for wherever there is a parking area, there will be one in the future.
Thanks.
And then additionally, we've worked with the Forest Service. So that way, a section of the old alignment at the bottom middle between Placer and Placer River overflow. I don't know if you can throw your pointer over the highway to your left. The the existing alignment in between Placer River and Placer River overflow to your right and down. Left, there you go, just to the left of Placer River.
Okay.
So that old alignment right there, that's actually going to be cul de sac at the end. And so the Forest Service is going to pick up maintenance of that old section of roadway. We're going to remove the bridge, but on the left side, there'll be room for snow machine parking, you know, and a and a number of other things. And so that'll be a nice improvement in the area, but that'll be owned and maintained by the Forest Service.
Thank you.
Partnered with them on all on a number of things in the area. And then, you know, with the improvements of the pathway being added, under crossings being added to get you from one side of the highway to the other. There's a there's a lot of great things headed in that in that area.
And I just wanted to clarify one thing. We recently had a presentation about potential redesign of the intersection between Aliaska Highway and Seward Highway. But that's not part of this project. That's correct.
Correct, yeah. You won't see us up north doing much, if any, improvements. We we need to put in a roadway information station up near Girdwood so that way, but you know, that's that's a small thing. And then I think we're going to have to put in a culvert underneath the highway where we ran into some problems with Phase One of the project. But outside of that, you shouldn't see us outside of this core area.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, I see you have a question.
Well, I have a comment about kind of safety. I drive that road a lot. And obviously, you know, the more pullouts, the better. Because that gets people that are going slower, people want to go faster. One of the problems in the winter is the pullouts, you know, it's dark and you don't know they're coming up. And now with the lack of funding for DOT, sometimes they're plowed, sometimes they're not. Is there any thought to illuminating the pullouts in any way or somehow so you would know you could safely pull out?
Sure, it's pretty atypical for us to to light pullouts. Number one, most of those pullouts or a number of them aren't the Department of Transportation's to maintain and operate. And then one of the main things is is that you're going to have to run power to them. And so although you may see power lines running through the area, they may not have they may not have line voltage to get you to, you know, something that that small. And so you'd have to put in major transformers and other things at a significant cost. And then the other problem that we've got right now, of course, if it is the Department of Transportation's, right now, we don't even have enough money to pay the electric bills. For instance, this project is a federally funded project. I am a federally funded basically employee of the Department of Transportation. And so basically, all of our funding on the state side goes to either match federal funds or to maintain the highways or light them or whatever. If you've driven north towards the Matsui Borough or on Minnesota, you'll see that we're turning off lights in the middle of the night as a curfew kind of action to save on funding there, because we literally just don't even have the money to turn on lights. And so we've got a number of things hitting us there that are probably a negative in that in that direction.
Then I asked just for, you know, another comment would be, you know, the better you sign the pullouts, the better. And my last comment is just a supportive comment. And, you know, when the when you go to two lanes and you have the striping that pushes people toward the right lane.
Yeah.
That is a great feature.
Yeah, I know. Our our highway design chief, Jim Amundson, was driving around on the lower forty eights, and he saw that one place. And, you know, he brought it back and he's like, we got to do this. And so this was the first project that we've done it in. And, you know, I know when I'm going through the area, then that kind of pushes me over to the right lane. We've done a number of things trying to figure out how to get drivers with the right lane. And as it turns out, that's a pretty effective means. So I'll take it back. Yeah, and we'll we'll take a look at the signing. I don't, we've we've got to follow a lot of federal standards and other things. And so I'm not sure that we've got room to do it, but we might have something.
Sean, for the past three years, we've been asking for the pullouts to have a marker or a signage so that because we respond to a lot of people that are disoriented or injured, and they pull into a pullout, but then they don't know where they are, because it could be a blizzard or they could just be significantly ill, like having a heart attack, and they don't have time to figure out what milepost they're at. Or they could just be a tourist. So I think it's been documented for the past three years, we've been asking to have the pullouts marked with a number or some distinguished or named. Do you know if there's been any movement on that?
So I'm not on the traffic side of the house, but I can reach out to our regional traffic engineer. He'd probably be the one that is taking those comments and tried to address them.
Or or if DOT has a solution for how we can better as fire and EMS respond to people that are completely disoriented on the highway, that would be, that's what I'd like to have a solution for.
Yeah, and I'll I'll reach out to our regional traffic engineer, bring it forward to my boss, the the chief of highway design, and see if we can get some communication going on that.
Okay, but you understand the problem?
I do believe I do.
Okay, thank you.
If I have any questions, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay. Any other questions from supervisors? I think I saw you hand up briefly, Brianna.
I do. Thank you. And thank you, Sean, for this presentation. And for the last issue that was just brought up, the idea I keep thinking of is reflectors, because everyone is required to have their headlights on, and a lot of people have huge, powerful headlights, even if it's a blizzard, but maybe not guardrail areas if there are areas with pullouts that have guardrails, but just really obvious reflectors could be better than nothing, even if it's a post or something that doesn't need to be charged or solar charged or supplied with electricity.
Yeah, I'll I'll check that we've got our standard guardrail reflectors that are going in. And I'll ask about any potential additional ones that we might put at the pullout specifically. I'll see what I can bring back.
Right. And anywhere on that highway, as you know, when it's dark out, reflectors are the only thing we we really have to go by.
Yeah.
My two questions were, if you know, what's the general timeline for Phase Two? And then what kind of speed zones are you considering between before and after twenty mile Portage and Placer?
Yeah, so I think this might be in a couple of the upcoming slides. But basically, construction has very recently been pushed to starting this year. So the administration has asked us to to push forward this this project as quickly as possible. And so we are going to hopefully advertise in April or May, probably in May. And then we'll be out there constructing for the next three years. Your second question was about. Oh, speed zones. So during construction, those will set be set by the our traffic supervisors. After construction, I believe that we'll be at fifty five miles an hour standard throughout the entire section. We've designed the entire highway for sixty miles an hour. So, you know, we'll be in that space. That's pretty standard, sixty to sixty five miles an hour for design speeds for a fifty five mile an hour highway. And that really just plays into what you're going to do with the with the curves. The really limiting thing in this area, obviously, is the Portage Glacier Highway curve. And so we we had to keep it at sixty miles an hour, I believe, just that way. We didn't blow out the entire middle of that whole section. So we had to make some compromises, but it'll be a much better curve for sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from supervisors? Okay, so I opened up to questions from the community. I see Emily Haas has then hand up.
Yeah, I have a question. What considerations did you, I guess, as the DOT can look at for that conjunction area? I've known a couple of senior design projects, specifically in civil engineering, looking at transportation that have tried to construct or design alternatives for that turnoff. Have any of those made it to?
With the Aliaska Highway or?
Yes, with the Aliaska Highway, that particular turnoff.
Sure, yeah. So that'll be a different project. So I'm only one of four project managers.
Well, I guess it would be the ported turnoff. Sorry, not that one.
Okay.
Both.
Sure, yeah. So so the Portage Glacier Highway.
The one that was right after LESE, yes.
Yeah, so if we move back to that slide, I think back one slide.
Yeah, the one that goes right off of.
Yeah, I could pull up my design plans on that, but basically, you know, you've got a right turn pocket coming off of the the Portage Glacier Highway.
Yeah, no, I saw that. I was just asking if any of the senior design projects had been considered in the actual design.
Indeed. So, yeah, we 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 use some of that information. But largely, because this highway took about three or four years to design. It was it was a good exercise, but but the the senior design class had a little bit of information that we we certainly took back to.
No worries.
Yeah.
And then the other, I guess, the other question I had, if you have time, is what value does the municipality, I guess, the DOT, not municipality, the DOT give to the amount of crashes and detriments to safety that are done on that particular area? And why do they not provide, I guess, why do they consider the cost of utilities and services more over that? Do you know?
I'm trying to dissect the the question.
I I guess, why does the, I guess, why does the DOT consider that the cost of electricity and utility to provide to that existing place for lighting and visibility? Why is that not, I guess, precedent over safety?
Sure, I'd say that with finite resources, you know, we're forced to make some very difficult decisions. Certainly, you've seen in the press that we are now being asked to reopen the maintenance station up in the pass.
I mean, as should be, but.
We we, I can't remember the exact number that our maintenance staff has been cut over the last ten years. But they they were cut to the bone about five years ago, and cutting kept occurring. And so I think we've closed three or four maintenance stations throughout the state. You know, we've reduced our fleet of of maintenance equipment. We've reduced staff. We've we've reduced the amount of sand that we have. We've cut electricity bills. We've found innovations. We started doing more with less a long time ago, and now we're just doing less with less. And so.
That doesn't sound like you guys are prioritizing safety. That sounds like you guys.
This is, Emily, this is, this looks as if it's gone quite a way outside of this particular presentation. So are there any other questions from committee members? I'm not seeing any other hands up. So in that case, thank you very much, Sean. I appreciate the the presentation, the time you've devoted to this. The the information, this presentation is in the packet. If anyone wants to follow up on with the particular links that were there at the end. Yeah, thank you again.
Yeah, no problem. And we do have a website out there, SewardHighwayseventyfive to ninety dot com with a slew of information. We will again have, you know, project engineers on site, you know, for the Department of Transportation. When we do get out there to construction, hopefully this coming summer. You know, and and then one just big call out to our maintenance staff. You know, they they do a lot with the little, and, you know, they're certainly the heroes of the department. And so I I, you know, I I think I think they do a great job with what they've got, but it's a it's a difficult.
I think maintenance is one of those areas of you you become very aware of it when it's not there. So it's kind of a, indeed, it's a it's an amazing facility. It's an amazing capability, but it's somewhat invisible until it's missing, and then you really notice it.
Yeah, indeed.
Yep. Thank you very much. Again, we have to move on. Unfortunately, we've only covered two items out of twenty, and we're sixty five minutes into the meeting. Thank you very much. So item number three is State Alaska DOT request for public input on the needs of the Girdwood Airport for considerations in the April twenty twenty one grant opportunities. So Sean Gardner of.
Hi, Mike.
DOT, the other Sean.
Yeah, it's good to see you again. I'm Sean Gardner. The Anchorage Area Planner, so I do all of the planning and programming for DOT in the the whole Anchorage area. And this project, I am writing up a proposal for an FAA grant for the Girdwood Airport. A little correction on that, we did push back the date that we're going to submit the grant to October because we became aware of the fact that the new Girdwood area plan is in progress. And having that planning input from the community is really helpful. So we thought it might be useful to have that or some of that at the time at which we submit the project. So we'll see. We'll see how those schedules line up, but it is it's going back to October and not April. So a little background on this, the this grant, we look, you know, we look every year, a couple of times a year at what all of the DOT owned airports are, sort of what condition they're in, and the last time they received a grant. Girdwood has not received a grant since two thousand and six, which, you know, it's it's coming up on the time at which we would want to rehabilitate the surfaces. And at the time that we do that, we like to look at anything else that's going on and do as much as we possibly can while we have crews out there. So I was at the Land Use Committee last week, and I spoke to people there, and I wrote down some really important things. Right now, we're looking at rehabilitating operational surfaces potentially extending the parallel taxiway to full length and the apron for tie downs and T-hangers. And definitely, we've noticed erosion protection is an important issue at the airport, so erosion protection from Glacier Creek. And last time, last week at the Land Use Committee, I was informed that human incursions were a significant issue, and it had to do with parking and pathways. And definitely, erosion was something that stood out and dust control and lack of parking and gates. The gates need rehabilitation. So anyway, with that, not to take up too much time, I'm just here to gather as much information as I can while we're in the scoping phase so that any issues that are eligible in this grant, if we can get it in, that's the goal. So if anyone has any comments, they would like to talk about needs at the airport, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions or comments from supervisors? I'm not seeing anything. I just reiterate, I think what you heard at Land Use is, I think, one of the, there is a fair amount of human incursion onto the taxiway part, because it's the only way to access a significant part or access from residential areas to sort of the upper part of the meadows. And only about a maybe thirty. And only about a maybe thirty, forty percent of the the overall parcel that the airport, that the DOT control is actually used for airport and for aviation. The rest of it is, is, you know, to the east or to the north. And not having any proper footpaths or trail access route area sort of drives people onto the taxiway. So anything we can do to alleviate that and provide a sort of pathway or trails away from the active airport, I think would be beneficial.
Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, yeah, I would just second that. I know it's been an important issue for the community for a long time, and it, I don't think it was fully known that people were going places where they shouldn't until the big signs were put up. And so that's, yeah, I would definitely second looking into that further with this project.
Okay, Brianna, I think I, oh, you?
Yes, thank you, Sean. I'll just third that, it's a huge problem for everyone that recreates in Girdwood, and I was at the Land Use, so everything you heard there is totally what would be brought up if no one brings up anything else tonight. So everything there was really important. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from supervisors? Okay, I'll open up to the community. I saw Carolyn and Crystal. Who'd like to start? Carolyn?
All right, hi, this is Carolyn Grodin. I'd like to speak both as Chair of Girdwood Trails Committee, but also as a private person. Just reiterating what was already said about the need for some kind of a pedestrian and, well, and probably bike and ski way to get through that property to access the Upper Valley. I mean, it's been historical use forever since I was, since I grew up here. We actually had a trailhead out at the end of the airport before the airport expansion. And which I realize that can't happen, but it just really seems like we could find a a pathway, make a trail up on the bluff beside the access road and hopefully be able to access the Upper Valley without having to go drive up and park in private parking lot of the hotel and such.
Thank you. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Crystal, you have a hand up.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the idea of getting a pedestrian bridge across to to reduce that trespass issue. So if that can be part of the grant, that would be, I think, priority.
Yes, and I will definitely bring all of this forward. I'm, there was some question, just expectations management. There was some question when I brought it forward to my supervisor whether trails are eligible for FAA grants. But if we can get it in, definitely, you know, this is the number one thing that people have said to me. So I'm going to do everything I can to see if there's any way for safety, for mitigation, that we can put a trail into this grant.
Definitely, I think reduction of human incursion is the way to put it, and dogs, probably more dogs than humans. Humans are a little bit better behaved, maybe. Kristen Collins, Kristen, you have a question? You see, you have your hand up. But you're on mute.
Oh, sorry about that. Hey, this is my first meeting, and I definitely don't have an idea of the scope of that FAA grant, but that's really exciting to hear. And I was curious if that funding, it could fund infrastructure like lighting, airport lighting along the runway and other, like, operational safety, things like that.
Yes, the funding, airport lighting is eligible, safety navigational aids are also eligible. Dust mitigation, that's something that I know is eligible. So things like that, definitely. Lighting is, if there's a known lighting issue, that's definitely something we can include, and we can get points in the grant for it. So if anyone knows of a lighting issue, I would love to hear about it because then I can include it, and maybe we're more likely to get money.
Well, that's great to hear. Yeah, I think airport lights, just for flying in close to dark, would be really helpful.
I'm, I know there's an AOPA representative who represents the airport. I don't know if you've reached out to them or if there's any other user groups, maybe somebody else in the audience knows if there's any user groups for the airport. Be worth contacting them as well, perhaps. Kim, you have your hand up.
Hi, yes, this is Kim, and it's a comment for Sean. Thank you for taking the time to present to us. I work at one of the businesses down at the airport, and the thing that I get the most questions about public coming through is where to park to access the transient airplanes. And so the owners and just people meeting other airplanes don't have any place to park on the road. So I know there's signs saying no parking, and then there's no way to access it. So that that would be a comment I would like to see covered.
Okay, yeah. There may be scope for that, certainly airport access is one of the things that we can look into. Thank you.
I think that also came up at Land Use, access to the transient area. Kyle?
And I brought this up at Land Use too, but just restate for the record is to look at drainage improvements for the airport coming down Mount Hood Road there and trying to get the water out to Glacier Creek. The development of the thirteen condo hangar unit has increased flow, and now it's sending it into the neighborhood. And so it would be nice, and and years ago, we talked with the Los Angeles State Hydrologists when the runway or the taxiway there at the far end washed out, and they they agree, they didn't see a problem with sending that in between. So Sean, I'll try to send you a GIS file that shows you the rap, the route that I am proposing. And that way, I think that would alleviate the pressure on these neighborhoods. They're seeing a lot more water now because of that new development.
That would be excellent, Kyle, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? I don't see any other hands up, anybody, anybody else from the community? Okay, thank you very much again for the presentation, Sean. Again, is there a, is there a good way of contacting you? If anyone has ideas or thoughts, or anyone from the radio wants to contact you?
I'm just going to put my email in the chat. It's sean, S H A W N dot gardner, G A R D N E R, at alaska.gov.
Okay, thank you, we'll put that in the minutes as well. Thank you very much, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Excellent, thank you. We will now move on to item number four, which is the legislative report. I see.
Before you go on, Mike, Kim's hands came up.
Oh, I thought that was from earlier, sorry, Kim, is that something else you wanted to add?
That was from earlier, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item four, which is legislative report. I do see John Weddleton on on the call. John, if you have.
I am here, and I'll try to be brief.
Hi, John.
Sounds like you're behind, and I've, sorry, it was, I guess I'm on time. I was at the Hillside Community Council's meeting now too, and they, Jack Adamas is actually over there right now, so I've got an ear to that, and I'm sorry, I missed his presentation for Girdwood. So I just want to hit a few things that are kind of hit the newspapers, I guess, and have created consternation or or thought on. And and one thing is, we had a, we got twenty million dollars from the state recently, and there was a perception that that was an additional twenty million dollars of CARES Act funds that we could use for the things that that's desperately needed for. But unfortunately, that was part of the hundred fifty-six million that we already had committed. So and it's not new money. And and then we we did something that has some people that looks very weird, and and the people are scratching their heads over it, it seems pretty legitimate. And that is, we took a large portion of the CARES Act funds that we haven't spent yet and used them to pay police officers. So and people think that should be spent for CARES Act funds, which is what we did. The CARES Act funds expire on December thirtieth, so any that we thought were at risk of expiring, we used to pay police officers, and the general fund money that that freed up will be used to pay for the CARES Act expenditures that we'd already allocated and committed to. So there's really no change in the use of the CARES Act funds. We just moved it from a pocket with a hole in it to a pocket that doesn't have a hole in it. And this looks a little odd, but this was actually a recommendation from Treasury. When the administration went and spoke with the Treasury, they said, protect your money, do this. So we didn't pay police with it, really. We paid police with it, freed up general fund, use that freed up general fund money to do those CARES Act projects. There's, well, we also have something tomorrow that Suzanne had a lot of input on, and that is changes to the election code. And and most of it is just simply a kind of terminology and things like that, tightening up the the way the code reads. Nothing truly substantial, but it does clarify that these, some aspects of kind of voter fraud and clarifies that the clerk can do anything that, you know, to to press charges and so on against any perceived voter fraud, it can investigate voter fraud. And that wasn't clear for some people. But that's up, if you're, if you're, I mean, that's a big deal is how we do our elections. And if you have some thoughts on that, take a look, it's up probably for a vote on the tomorrow's meeting. We're also rolling out some little videos and and more information on the website for, as we call it, Assembly One O One. So there's one little video is how to do testimony at the assembly, and it's three minutes, and it's just tremendous because it actually gives you the rules of engagement and shows someone doing a very nice testimony. So that that'll help a lot of people their first time to testify. And we've got another one that is just what does the assembly do? What is a resolution? What is an ordinance and so on? And and I think certainly the people on G-Boss and most of the people in this room are aware of those things, but it sure is a help when new people come up and they've got something they're passionate about or concerned about, and they trip over our rules. It just seemed very unusual, so really excited about that, and we'll have quite a bit more of that over the next three or four months that it should be really good. So any, those are a few highlights, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John from the board? I'm not seeing anyone. Yeah, I did those videos, and I I remember the first time I went to an assembly meeting, it seemed very intimidating because you're all up on that high stage. It's feels like you're in judgment when you stand down, though, they're crucible. So thank you for that.
Sure, there's no solution for that. I, when I, you know, I was on the planning commission for years, and then afterwards testified the assembly or the commission, and it feels intimidating. It's just, it is a bad layout. Someday, I hope we drop it two feet.
Any other questions from the community? I'm not seeing any, not seeing any hands. Thank you, John. I I don't think there's any other legislators or or representatives on the call, unless I'm missing anyone.
I'll be hanging out, so I'll put on.
Thanks, John. I appreciate you coming and and explaining the assembly actions to us. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number five, supervisors reports. We'll start with public safety, James.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to address the issue of the public and the snow machines running around in Girdwood. And Chief Shea is going to report on the specifics of what happened today regarding the violations. But I just wanted to point out, you know, public safety standpoint and and also as a community, that snow machines are not allowed to be used in the municipal area. And we would like to see some community members, if you see someone out there, please report it, and we will try to respond as soon as we can. And from there, I I really don't have anything else to report on the public safety end, and I'll let Chief Shea take it from there.
Good evening. We did get a report over the weekend, as well as early into last week, about some people trespassing on private property with snow machines and off-road vehicles. We've gotten several reports over the weekend. This afternoon, I advised the officers about that. They contacted the and potential individual that was trespassing. He was advised that if conduct continues, there could be citations and or summonses for trespass. The individual says the complaint on that particular property will not happen again, but we're going to keep on monitoring it. For general public aspects, besides Anchorage municipal codes, there is state ordinances under Alaska Administrative Codes on off-road vehicles, including snow machines on the roadway or other locations are prohibited. And based on what Kyle has asked me and our hard department do, we will cite people initially, but if it's a trespassing issue after several warnings or after warnings, they will receive a summons for trespassing, which is a misdemeanor. Other than that, we're preparing for our, the upcoming New Year's festivities. I know there was some questions brought up under the public safety meeting as well. For New Year's coverage, we, I looked at stats from last year's New Year's Eve and New Year's Day coverage. Roughly, we had just under twenty calls for service in the Girdwood area with two officers on during the core hours last year. This year, we're going to change that number to three officers on during the core hours. Core hours will be from roughly eight PM till about four AM or so. The, and the times before that and after that, we'll have one officer on with additional officers as a backup if need be. So with that, anyone have any other questions?
I just had one question about, is, given there's a, you know, the bars and restaurants are closed through the, through to January, is there an expectation it's going to be quieter, or do you anticipate similar to other years?
I'm anticipating, we did get some heads up that there's going to be some private events at residential houses throughout the Girdwood area. But I'm pretty sure, I'm hoping the public is pretty respectful for to others, and I think it should be uneventful besides normal celebrations. That's generally peaceful, except right around the midnight hour where it'll probably be a little loud. But generally, we've been having with local residents as well, some visitors that come in from outside the Anchorage Bowl area. They've been pretty polite and minding the peace when they're in Girdwood.
And Mike, I can address that as well. Out of the public safety meeting, we had a large, long discussion about that, and there is actually an item tonight we'll discuss that's related to that. But I think consensus that we had out of that group was that most likely people are going to arrive to their residence for the night and then be within that general location as there's no fireworks or torchlight parade this year. The only thing going on is is the skiing to midnight in that aspect. So if anything, people will probably be more within their their residential areas as compared to the large contingent of people who end up at the base of Chair Four.
Right, I know a lot of people are going to be happy to say goodbye to twenty twenty.
One, one additional thing if I can mention, during the public safety meeting, we also discussed possibilities of if vehicles are parked in areas that prohibit emergency response from fire or EMS. I've already talked to my officers as well. Those vehicles will first try to contact the owners to move those vehicles to free up the access for emergency vehicles on certain roadways. If we can, we'll cite them, and if we need to, the vehicles will be impounded.
Okay, thank you. I do see questions from Shirley H L B and and Chief Weston. So Shelly, do you want to start first?
Sure, thanks, Mike. Chief, I'd like to thank you for addressing my reports. For those of you who don't know, snow machining and use of any motorized vehicle on pretty is prohibited by code. I was met on Friday morning with, by three very nice gentlemen who helped me walk through the meadows back to the west of Crow Creek Road where the initial reports came from. We posted signs, and at that time, the individual who we believed to be doing it came out. I introduced myself, he acknowledged that, yes, that was his snow machine. And then I also videoed him reading the signs and interacting with the witnesses. By the next morning, the signs were gone, and there were more tracks through that meadow. And then I also understand that there's tracks through the meadows to the west of the Timberline neighborhood. And so I appreciate the officers going and talking with that gentleman today. I hope that that does work. But I ask any of you who who hear or see snow machines on public property to report that. You can report it through code assessment, and you can call with your police dispatch. Or and you can also let me know because I'm, I'm trying to stay on top of it. A lot of the citizens that I've spoken with really feel that if one guy gets away with it, that Girdwood is going to become a regular place for this to occur. So I thank all of you who have helped me and that are working to try to, to try to keep the code violators in check. To try to keep the code violators in check.
Actually, Chief Weston.
I just wanted to self disclose that we do use snow machines for emergency patient access. So I guess, do I need a letter, Shelley, for that? That would be one question. And then just, we traditionally are super busy on New Year's because we just see everybody that's overindulged. So our call volume generally goes up right after midnight and starts usually starts at 1:00 AM with a lot of overdose calls.
Michelle, in response, this is Shelley. No, I understand that there are certain. Situations in which you have to access a patient in a place that your apparatus can't go. So we understand that. It's just these guys who are tearing up the meadows. They are wetlands and if they're going to do it now, they're probably going to do it during melting season. And these are sensitive valuable wetlands. They're also going up and down Crow Creek Road. This one individual told me flat out that he goes up and down Crow Creek Road. So it's it's not your your once in a in a month rescues that are the problem. It's it's these people who don't think that code applies to them.
Any other, I don't see any PSAC representatives. Any other questions for anybody? If not, we'll move on to roads and utilities. Jerry.
I have just something real quick. As most people probably know, we're going to get some weather over the next couple of days, especially later tonight into tomorrow morning. And so everybody is be aware that the Rose Crew is ready to go. But, you know, be patient. Kyle does a great job in organizing them. But we're going to have some wind, some rain. Hopefully we'll keep the power on, but be prepared. That's all I've got.
Yeah, we advise against traveling unless you have to. Absolutely. Just stay home.
Thanks, Jerry. And I'm not seeing any questions. Let's move on to Parks and Rec Cemetery. Brianna.
Okay, the Girdwood Trails Committee meeting was way back on the first of the month. And we did speak of some of the topics that we've already gone over tonight and one one tiny detail that Shelley from HLB mentioned in addition to the snow machining. If you see it is no cutting dead or down trees unless it's on a trail. The Trails Committee, the staff is working on operations and safety plans required to reopen the hand tram aiming for summer of 2021. But the MOA election and changes in administration are potential challenges to this. The Trails Committee reviewed and recommended that GBOS approve the butte company to study bridge alignment. To the Winter Creek Trail request for study of lower. Iditarod National Historic Trail Phase Three has been pulled as this is likely to fall under scope of DOT project addressing the Aliaska Highway and Seward Highway interchange. The plan amendments, the appendices were approved and revised. The revisions approved update is posted on the GBOS and the Parks and Rec webpages. Trails committee discussed staffing for summer 2021 with CARES Act funding. And. Their next meeting is the fifth of January. I encourage a lot of the community to participate in the Trails Committee meetings because you can only vote if you attend. In a 12 month period and they have two seats open that are vacant in. That will be decided in January. It's treasurer and vice chair, I believe. And grooming update, as you might know, the grooming is in full swing and it's ski only on the Nordic 5K. And has been for weeks now. So I hope a lot of you are out enjoying that. I think that is all I have.
Thanks, Brianna. Any questions from anybody supervisors or public? I'm not seeing any questions. So it's gone to Fire Department, Aaron.
Yeah, and I think most of the items that I wanted to update on are on the agenda below in old business. So I'll hold off on most of that. But I did just want to say thank you to Girdwood Fire and Rescue because I know that there's been some difficult rest or different difficult calls. On the highway and our community is full right now with residents and guests. And so that could mean that you're busier in the coming days. Just make sure to keep yourselves safe and thanks for your service.
Thanks, Aaron. Chief Weston.
Hello, I was just noticing on the update that I wrote before we had 347, 48 calls. We're currently as of today's call at 389. So we've had, you know, we've had quite a few calls. I think that's like 41 calls. Since I wrote that memo, so that might explain why we're all a little tired. Good news is we all received our, those people that were interested received their first COVID shot on Sunday. And then we'll receive a second shot. In a month. And part of this is to keep all our patients that we transport safe. And then also to be able to have staffing available here because we follow a very strict COVID isolation exposure. Criteria. Um, along with that, we've got one member that's just finished engineer training for lieutenant, starting a joint Girdwood hybrid online delivery firefighter one. And I think that's my big thing. We're starting station fogging. Instead of our four hour wipe down with bleach, which is much better for maintaining our equipment. And that's it for me. I'll yield my time to the next to the presentation I have later.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions on Fire Department issues? Okay, I'm not seeing any. We'll go into land use, which is me. I'm going to be as quickly as quick as I can. We, the Title 21, Chapter Nine review. We're fully engaged with the municipality with the planning department on parking, on our proposal for changing parking. We've they've done a technical review of our proposal. We responded mostly to that. We, the new acting traffic engineer was a little skeptical about our procedure and process. So we're doing a little bit more work justifying that and then and then we'll sort of pursue it in a more political way. If that's not adequate. So that's progressing. Housing Working Group, we had a meeting last week, which was a general meeting. And we're going to have a meeting next month on the Wednesday following land use, which will be focused on alternative housing types. So primarily tiny homes, but other related issues potentially a year and an area for people who. Who sort of use RVs or. Bands and things like that as well. So that's my very quick summary. Any questions? If not, we will move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. I see Kathy Troutler. Kathy, welcome to the meeting.
That was very quick. Thank you, Mike. I just want to give a brief update on the status of the Girdwood Health Clinic. Board of Supervisors is well aware of what's been happening that with the help of the Girdwood Alliance and our assembly members, John Weddleton and Suzanne. La France, we were successful in our efforts to receive $5 million of CARES Act funds through the Anchorage Muni. With focus on our COVID care and testing and 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 that. We received this amazing check last week and the total project is expected to cost 6 million. So we received the check for 5 million. Our board is working on a fast track fundraising campaign. As we need to have $1 million pledged by April to determine if we can move ahead with both phases of what we have planned to do. The details on this will be coming in the mail and on the clinic website and on Facebook. We already have more than $250,000 pledged through two foundations and we're working on grants. Ternigan Arm Health has needed the property to the Girdwood Health Clinic and we are working together as one board. We will be building on the same lot where the clinic is located now. Patient care will continue in the old building until completion of the first phase, which will be in the fall of 2021. And then the providers will move from the old clinic building into the new 5,000 foot building is what's planned. And then the old clinic will be demolished and the second phase will begin, which will add. Administrative space and meeting room for behavioral health sessions and so forth. Our board has hired a design team, Sparks and. A project manager and the timeline is very aggressive. We plan to break ground in April of 2021. And complete the project in the spring of 2022. There's been a very, very high demand at the clinic for COVID testing. Please don't hesitate to call. Depending on how many tests are needing to be done urgently, you may not be able to get a test the same day. But they're working hard and you can see them outside in the cold, under the shelter there, doing testing all day long. There have been no staff infections. It's their PPE has been, our supplies have been good. And good news for local care, two things, our medical director, Dr. Aaron Lester. Is leading Anchorage Neighborhood Health and will be full time at our clinic starting in January. Dr. Lester specializes in women's health and childcare and lives in Girdwood and it'll be great. Anyway, I can tell you she's a wonderful doctor. Also, we now have a psychologist and a psych nurse practitioner on board and we hope to be fully staffed for our behavioral staff, health. Care by January. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, but I wanted to make that quick.
Thanks, Kathy. I see we have actually at the next meeting next month, one of the design team will be here to talk about more about the project.
Right.
Any? Any questions? If not, we will move on to Kristen, who I see has your hand up for public comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, and thank you. This is Kristen again. And I'll keep this pretty quick. But I live here, I live in Anchorage at 611 Roundtree Drive. I'm a former employee and program coordinator for a project called Solarize Anchorage. I no longer work there, but I love the program so much that I'm going to volunteer my time to help it get off the ground in 2021. And just to keep this really brief, the program is a community driven campaign that brings communities. For our program in Solaris Anchorage, that's community councils. It brings community council areas together to use their group purchasing power to invest in solar in bulk to receive a volume discount. And we launched this program in 2018 and since then, nine neighborhoods have or nine community councils have participated with 275 home installs. We have opened up the application process again for 2021. And I'd love to see Girdwood participate in this year's program if there's interest. The program, like I said, makes solar more affordable and accessible by providing what we call the Solarize Discount. In previous years, that's been about 10%. So through the bulk purchasing investors or people who sign contracts with the solar installer receive about 10%. And then that Solarize Discount is paired with federal tax credits. This year is the last year for the residential tax credit. It's 22% this year. Last year it was 26. The year before it was a 30% tax credit. In 2022, it'll decrease to 10% and eventually phase out. So really excited to open the program back up for new neighborhoods this year to take advantage of that tax credit. As this is the last guaranteed year, it will remain relatively high. And we did a full on presentation about Solarize and how it works and how to participate last week. And we recorded about an hour long Zoom presentation. It's about 20 minutes of content and the rest is Q and A. If folks are interested in learning more about Solarize, or if you'd be interested in helping Girdwood Solarize, I'd love to share that information. As well as the program coordinators' contact info.
Thank you, Kristen. Is there some, does the community itself has to do some something as a whole? Or is it just if enough residents are interested?
Yeah, so we have used community councils as a boundary in the past because it's really clear who is eligible for. The exclusive discount that the installer will give you. And so that's kind of the framework that we've used. And then to start the process, there will be one to two like core volunteers who will do initial outreach to homeowners. Or people in the area just to gauge interest. You're not signing up for anything. You're not signing a contract. You're just saying. Hey, I'm interested in Solarize. I'd love to see this come to Girdwood. I think this would be good for our community. And we use that number of interested participants to put in a RFP or Request for Proposal. That will distribute to the five or six local solar installers that we have. And they'll gauge that interest and then give pricing structures based on that.
Okay, great. So if anyone's interested, is the best person to contact you or is there somebody else locally who's organizing?
Yeah, so you can contact me and I believe Jerry has my email address. And then also Chanelle Afghan is the new program coordinator. And so I think Jerry has both of our emails. If it's helpful, I can send Jerry an email with the presentation and the tools to start the process. And then maybe he could distribute to folks that are interested. Not sure how you want to proceed there, but. And I mentioned Jerry because we've talked to him via email the past couple of weeks.
Yeah, Jerry.
Oh, yes. Kristen, you have been in contact with Mitch Roth, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mitch was on the presentation last week, so maybe he's a great person for me to connect with directly.
I think that would be great. And I do have both your emails and could. I don't have with me right now, but I can.
We'll just add that information into the minutes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Mike, I have one and it goes to actually back to the public safety issue. I didn't have this in my notes until now. So I want to read it into the record and it's from, so I'll bring it up here so you can see it as well. Excuse me. Okay, sorry. The public comment is from Christina Henrickson, Box 978, Girdwood, Alaska. And her public comment, she says, the public safety advisory committee is not scheduled to meet until the first of March 2021. As such, I bring forth a complaint about the lack of code enforcement for Dylan Atkinson, owner and resident at 357 Crow Creek Road. And the snow machine trespass on wetlands on Alaska State Land Survey 81-149 Track A. Whoever is impounded, whoever has impound authority should cite and impound Mr. Axon's snow machine. We pay for what your police to enforce the law. They have been notified multiple times by the resident who witnessed the trespass and the landowner. And in this case, the lack of follow up violates the terms of service agreement in the Girdwood Service Area Appendix A, Section 3. I urged WPD's. Unresponsiveness, the person with authority to cite and impound the offending party and the landowner to resolve. I appreciate having an engaged landowner enforcing municipal code and provide non-motorized recreational opportunities in the area. I do not want the area closed off because of one violator who to date has shown no respect or authority.
Thank you for reading out the record card. And thank you again, Kristen. Any other public comments? I'm not seeing any other hands, so we'll move on to old business. Agenda item LUC 2007-04, update on findings from concerns raised about the power to run multifamily development. Kyle.
We had one, I'll get this later. So this relates to the project down in the mine roads where the lot has been completely cleared, except for approximately 25%. And in relation to the neighbor. And in relation to the neighbor who has been fully exposed because of the clearing of the lot next to them. And so we have worked with that neighbor and we had a joint meeting with Planning Department for MOA, the Land Use Enforcement, and then the resident who's, who's, whose property has been exposed, myself and Jerry Fox. And it was, it came to the conclusion that the landowner who cleared the property is within the rights of the permit. They, the Land Use Enforcement Officer responded about three days after the request from GBOS to examine the property and determine that they did have approximately 25% of the native vegetation remaining. It is actually written within the permit that they have to retain approximately 25% of their vegetation. By code, they're actually not even required to retain the native vegetation, but through their permitting process, they agreed to that. And it was found that there was really no enforcement action that was required to bring back a vegetation buffer between the two properties for the, for the affected property owner. Through that process, we were able to get the property owner in contact with the developer and they have started a communication back and forth in the hopes that it may resolve the view shed issue and, and bring back some vegetation in the buffer between the properties, especially in the setback. I'm not sure as to where that has gone, but last I heard they're, they were going to continue to work that way going forward. The development of the property will also bring back a buffer, you know, unfortunately it'll be buildings, but it will block out that property once the buildings are built there next summer. So that, that's, that's where we stand at this point.
Right. Actually, Kyle, do you want to read, actually, we should start with comments from the supervisors. Anybody want to comment from the board? Okay, I'll make a comment. So one of my concerns here is that we went through a fairly, a very extensive local process for the, for effectively two variants. And there was lots of written communication and promises made by the developer, which they then completely ignored and didn't fulfill the promises to the community. And my concern is that, you know, we have to go on is, is what they promise and what documents they provide to us. And they were that they're going to follow that. And I think the assumption, which we discovered, maybe, you know, somewhat naive, is that when, when we get written, written commitment, there's some way of actually following up with that written commitment. And it appears that that's not the case if they're not actually included as a, as a specific, if it's things which voluntarily go beyond code or they're not included, that's a specific restriction or requirement in the conditional use, as a condition, I should say, in the conditional use permit. And I think that's a surprise to many of us, an upsetting surprise to many of us. So I'm not really clear, I think when, when this comes up again in the future, we'll also, we'll obviously have, we'll be much more careful about what we actually, what we, what we believe and what we don't believe about any written communications from developers. But also I think we're going to do our best to try and get things actually included into, into any conditional use permits. But I, again, I think there's something kind of fundamentally broken in the, in the system here where we have a local process. There's a lot of, you know, direct involvement. There's lots of commitments made and then they can be completely ignored. And I have a lot of concerns about that, which I've been following up with, with planning. And I think our assembly members as well in the future. Would you like to read, Kyle, would you like to read Ron's comment into the, to the record?
Comment from Ron Tenney, Gerwood resident. My comment is regarding old business item number six. Not sure I'll make the meeting, but wanted to comment. What is the relevance of LUC and GBOS if MOA zoning can provide a variance that LUC and GBOS do not support? Can we take action to correct this loophole? If not developer, if not developers can and most likely will circumvent LUC and GBOS by first meeting with MOA zoning for their opinion on a variance prior to going through Gerwood process.
And again, any other comments from supervisors? Jerry?
Yeah, I guess I'll make a comment. I just, I would agree with everything that Mike said. One thing Ron said, people in the community keep using the word variance. The developer didn't ask for a variance. It was a conditional use permit, which is different than a variance. But yeah, I was very disappointed. And if you listen to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there were a lot of inaccuracies during the meeting and the whole process seems to be flawed where you have a meeting where some inaccuracies are set during the commission and there's no way to dispute them. You get three minutes of comment and that's it. And so I don't know if it's the, the same when it's not Zoom and you're all in the same room where you can comment when people make misrepresentations, but I was very disappointed in the process. I'll just say that.
I would, there were actually, there was actually a variance before the conditional use. It was both the variance. Yeah, yeah. Comment from Chief Weston, and then I'm going to put John Weddleton on the spot, both as assembly members and a previous member of the P and Z. Chief Weston.
So I'm making this comment just as a homeowner, not as a, in any.
Sorry, Michelle. In that case, Michelle.
Yeah, capacity. I just want to echo what Jerry said. What's frustrating is if you can have to register by two o'clock in the afternoon to talk and then you can't dispute anything, even though you're at the, you're at the meeting on Zoom because you haven't by two o'clock made the magical cutoff and planning and zoning staff do not respond to email requests to be put on as, to be giving testimony. So I just want to add that.
Thanks, Michelle. So Erin, I see a question from you and then I'll ask, then I'll ask a question of John.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to ask a question because in my experience in the past, you know, planning and zoning has taken GBOS's and land use opinion or letters into consideration pretty seriously. And I just wonder, I mean, has something changed or what, why didn't that happen this time?
I could comment a little bit on that. Part of the problem was the way the meeting was structured, you know, it was centered all around the developer. And what happened was we submitted our letter of objection, but our letter of objection didn't get submitted until a couple of days before the commission meeting. And because of that, the developer didn't have that and even some of the commissioners hadn't read it, which was very disappointed. And so I went back and said, why didn't you even read our objection letter? And they said, well, we just got it. So in the future, we need to try to get those in quicker and sooner, our objection letter. But one of the commissioners stated, well, what would the developer meet all the requirements that the community wanted in the letter of objection? And the developer said, well, I don't know what they are, so you know, we're not going to move the road down to Aliaska Highway. And then she went on. And so, you know, she's very good at obfuscating, you know, that's her job. It's not anything wrong with her. It's just that's what she does. She's working for the developer. But, you know, they just went on, they went on to other things. And like they said in the, in the meeting, that one of the commissioners said, well, you could put a hotel up there. I mean, what's the difference between a hotel and you could have multiple guests? Why are people worried about short-term rentals? Well, you can't put a hotel on that property. That's not within the zoning, but nobody disputed that. And so things like that were disappointing.
There were actually some mistakes made by some of the comments from planning and zoning were also incorrect. I think it's just a, you know, a lot of people in P and Z do not see Gerwood, Gerwood topics very often and they're not at all familiar with code. John, as a previous P and Z member, do you have any comments or thoughts on this?
A little bit. I have to apologize. They're, they're lively at the Hillside Community Council, which is actually
That's good.
Trying to keep an ear there too, but you know, you guys really do an amazing job in your communications with the assembly and the planning commission. So if something went awry here, it sounds like something was, you know, you want stuff on time and you always want to address the criteria that they have to view things by, like in a rezone, there's I think seven criteria. And all of your comments should focus on those. And if they stray from those, it's like, maybe interesting, but we can't really use it. So, but, so I guess that's all I can add is you guys have been very effective and always just focus on what the planning commission is required to use as their decision criteria.
Yeah, I feel what we did in that case is just, it was, it was a very, let's put it this way, it was an extremely developer-friendly body. The current composition and they were very much, it was very much a how do we get to a yes?
Yeah, and I'll agree with that too, because I asked those questions as well and, and, you know, the, the developer did a very good job of meeting that criteria in their argument. And the, to the comments that came from Gerwood, you know, differed with what the developer wanted for those criterias. And I think in, in the end, it was the body who probably supported more the developer's point of view versus what Gerwood.
And we will of course touch, we may touch on this a little bit later, but there's a, there's a kind of fundamentally unusual situation in Gerwood where we have, you know, material going through an elected body, elective representatives going up to an appointed body, which overrules or can overrule, which is kind of unusual. That's true with P and Z, urban, urban design, et cetera. Obviously not true with the assembly.
Resident Michelle has her hand raised.
I just, I just, Mr. Welton, I just wanted to say that, you know, having worked at the municipality for years and done plan review when I was a land management officer at the Heritage Land Bank and that, and being a former AICP, I just thought the entire planning process at that meeting was a charade. And I think that the fact that we had had two years of public comment at the Board of Supervisor, at the board level and the land use level here was completely all ignored. And basically to the point that the staff meeting, the staff report basically said that there was no objections received when people had spent hours putting time into public comment at the land use committee and Gerwood Board of Supervisors. So I just think it was a travesty that this project has been allowed and then to put up a tone deaf kind of housing development side at the sign at the bottom of our street after that process just shows how completely out of touch the developer is with our community.
Well, that's disappointing. You know, it was interesting. I was just kind of looked at the list of people on the planning commission a couple of days ago and I thought, wow, that looks like a pretty decent group of people. The, the ones that I know, but you know, it's hard to tell that dynamic and I didn't know all them, but yeah, that's disappointing. Who, who was the planner on the case?
Ryan Yeo.
Ryan was, huh? Yeah, that's, that's too bad. I mean, I, I know when the GBA speaks, the assembly puts a huge amount of credence in it.
It's, but it didn't go via the assembly.
Yeah, no, well, is, I mean, what's, what's the route for appeal though? You have a conditional use permit. I mean, there's generally.
The, I believe there isn't, there wasn't appeal actually generated. It goes through Board of Assessment or Equalization, I recall.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, I don't know.
But that's a very legalistic process. I mean, that's, you know, that's the point where you're engaging lawyers and, and looking to, you know, go through a court process.
And you have to have, I think it's like $1,500 deposit to start. And, you know, it's one of those things where, as an example, John, just to give you an example, the developer said they talked to the existing neighbors about the vegetation. Well, when asked about that, Ryan and the planning commissioner said, well, they went to the, the Board of Supervisor, they went to land use and so because they went there, they talked to people. They never talked to the neighbors. They never contacted the people that were adjacent. There's only two or three neighbors that are adjacent to them and they never talked to any of them personally. So anyways, it was very frustrating.
So while there was a lot, I think that we can, a lot of mistakes and problems in this process, I think our concern is is especially of anything in the future. So I think at the minimum, we're going to have a lot more attention in the local process. And try and make sure that everything, everything that's done locally, if we have, if we see any distinct differences between promises, which were made during the local process and informationing in the, in the application, we will make sure to point that out. It's just going to be more work. Crystal, I see your hand up.
I'll make it super quick. Just the comments that came through at Housing Committee by one of the residents that lived in the Mine Road area was that the general feeling of apathy, that they felt like they really rallied behind this cause and that nothing happened and they weren't listened to. And so they felt like, no matter what, we can't win. So I think that's a, just a sad situation and I just want to highlight that. Also, that when this meeting occurred, the muni was switching over the meeting platform and so it was very difficult to find. And the video was missing for at least, I would say probably a week and a half or so, so before I was able to find it and I was actively looking for it. So anyway.
Yeah, I think that's an opinion shared, not just of the neighbors, but I think broadly of, of everyone involved in the community process. Okay, I don't see any more hands up. Any other comments from board members? If not, we will, are there any next steps, Kyle? On this particular?
At this point in time, no, you know, they will go into building and I know the land use officer said they're, they're going to probably be keen to watch it because they feel, you know, that people will be watching as well. So Land Use Enforcement is aware of it and will be paying attention, especially to any complaints that come in.
I think you're on, put yourself on mute, Crystal. Thank you. Thanks, Kyle. Okay. And obviously we're going to be, we're going to be a lot more careful and pay a lot more attention in any, any future applications of this type, particularly of that specific developer. Okay. We'll move on to item number seven. GBOS updates on a series of issues. We'll go through Gerwood Community Council Structure Procedures for Out-of-Service Area Requests, Changes to GBOS Rules and Procedures, Additional Code of Conduct and Alaska Native Land Acknowledgement. So that's our broad topic. Rather than me talking all the time, I'm going to hand it over to Erin to say a little bit about the, the rules and procedures work we've done so far.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we want to do this. Do we, should I go through the items that we have added or changed in the procedures or?
I think, yeah, I think if we review, if you re-review the, the work we've done already and the suggestions we have, whether we vote on it or not, we'll, we'll have that discussion. Depends if anyone proposes a motion.
Okay. Well, I'm going to skip over the, just, you know, small corrections like capitalizations and things like that. So the first thing we added is on page four of 19. We added just a little more definition to the committees that the Gerwood Board of Supervisors has established the following standing committees. And then on the next page, we added a section for subcommittees and that the standing committees described above may create ad hoc subcommittees for the purpose of working on specific projects of that committee. And as I go through, you know, if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask or comments. And then the next section, meetings, we added some words there about the time, giving it a little bit of a time, just time boundary. So did we say exactly? The meeting may be extended for up to an hour after 10:00 PM by a majority vote of the members and the meeting will not extend beyond 11:00 PM. And that's for regular GBOS meetings. And then, let's see, we added a line about each agenda item is limited to a maximum of 60 minutes unless the duration is extended by a majority vote of the members present. And then the next major addition was on page six of 19. We added a section about agenda items and meeting materials, just to kind We added a section about agenda items and meeting materials, just to kind of define, um, what's on our agendas and, um, how meeting materials will be distributed ahead of the meeting. And that's following basically what we do now. Let's see. Oh, another part of this, uh, the last paragraph there on page six. We said, "Items of business other than standing items or reports shall be assigned to a member. This member will introduce the item and will work with any petitioner to ensure materials are prepared and available for the meeting. And items referred from a committee or subcommittee will be assigned to the member with that responsibility. Otherwise, the chair or co-chairs will assign the item to a member." Um, and that's just to kind of make sure that, um, all items on the agenda have a little bit of, um, or someone on the board has a little bit of knowledge about them before it's proposed. Let's see. Next major change is scrolling, uh, page 16 of 19. So, um, in going through this, Mike and I realized, um, that's Article 12 correspondence from GBOS, um, needed some work. There was, um, some of the text in there was just not what we were doing. For instance, I think it said that only the chair is able to, um, have the authority to sign letters on behalf of the GBOS. And how we do it now is we kind of, it's assigned to the appropriate supervisor and that supervisor signs. So, um, we added a delegation sentence in there that, um, the chair or co-chair is able to delegate that. Let's see. We changed some of the language about, um, distributing information via email, um, to make sure that it was following the Open Meetings Act. Let's see. And then the last, uh, on page 17 there, we added F, letter F. Just talking about that, uh, the content of the letter, any letter must be discussed at two GBOS meetings, um, prior to the members voting on it. And then the other major thing we did is, uh, page 19, we added, or we're proposing to add an attachment, which will outline, uh, standard of conduct for Gerwood Public Meetings. And, um, really what we wanted to do here was just define, um, what, what we expect standard of conduct to provide a, you know, an, an environment, um, with respect and civility so that everyone feels like they can speak, um, and do it in a courteous way.
Would it be possible to move to that section, Kyle, so people can look at the documents we're describing it? This is on the last page. That's, that's it, just up there. Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, that's, no, I'm glad you said it. I'm on my Word document, so I couldn't see the, the screen share. So just in summary, these standards shall apply to regular joint and special meetings and to work sessions of GBOS. And they may be adopted by GBOS committees and subcommittees by a vote of that body. And you can read through, um, you know, all the items there. It's, um, we based it on norms of acceptable and courteous business behavior. Just so we provide a, uh, good environment for people to share and listen and be heard. And that's, those are the major changes. Was there anything you wanted to specifically go over or add, Mike?
No, really just the, the code of conduct is the thing I just wanted to talk about. So, um, what I know is, uh, when I chair the meetings, it's, um, it's what we want to do is balance between being as efficient as we expect for a public process, but, you know, be relatively efficient. We want to respect everyone's time. We also want to make sure that everybody in the community has the opportunity to be heard. And we, we don't want to limit people's speech or, um, or, you know, restrict it in any unreasonable way. But there's definitely behavior which acts as an intimidating, um, or can act as an intimidating, uh, way and, uh, and stop people from feeling comfortable to share their views and opinions. And we obviously want to discourage that. So this is a, um, a document that we can, we'll publish on our webpage or, and we'll, uh, we'll share with, uh, we'll share with members of the community. And this is the kind of standards of behavior we expect. And for a chair, as a chair, it's really handy to have something written down, uh, that we can, we can point to if, uh, if there's violations or if people get towards the edge of this. In particular, we just want to make sure that, again, people are, people are talking through the board or to the board members, um, or to the chair and not to each other. It can be difficult. It can be difficult in person, but it can also be very difficult, um, uh, over the internet. It's easy to have, um, sort of to get engaged directly inside conversations and things like this. One of the reasons we don't have chat is to dissuade that, uh, that type of behavior. So we want everything to be on the record and, uh, and sort of through the body. And again, what we can't, the way we typically do things, we can't impose this on, while we could, I suppose, in theory, impose it on, uh, on committees. But, uh, the choice we've made is to allow committees individually to, um, to sort of adopt this. And the expectation is that they will. I think that's it. So, um, I did want to talk about, actually, are there any questions from, um, the board about anything specifically we've covered? Or any more, anything you want to go in more detail about? I'll give you a few seconds to respond. Obviously Erin and I have been talking about this a lot, so we may have covered things very quickly. Jerry, did you have something?
Well, I just, the one only, I appreciate both of your work. There's a lot of work and I, I like it all. I think it's all great. The one item that I'm a little leery about or want to know more about is where a supervisor is responsible for an item. And so, you know, well, my concern would be what if somebody brings an item and I am supposed to be the one addressing this item, but I don't agree with it? That's still okay, I guess. I don't have to agree with this item. I can, but I have to be knowledgeable of it. I mean, if I, yeah, somebody that doesn't agree with an item to be the sponsor, I think.
So we didn't use the word sponsor. So in contrast to, for example, the Assembly, where, you know, items or resolutions ordinances have sponsors, we, we don't have, we did choose not to use that word. What we want to do is make sure that there's somebody who can, who can, has, who basically has responsibility, uh, for that item. I mean, often, at the moment, we kind of do do that, but it's the chair of the meeting, who has responsibility for, uh, for, for marshalling the meeting and being able to sort of speak to, speak to an item if necessary. Uh, we just wanted something a little bit more formal, so we can distribute that responsibility across the board and make sure we have something written down. If it's an item that comes from one of the committees, it makes sense for the person who has responsibility for that committee. Uh, so if it comes from trails, we'd expect that to be the, uh, the Parks and Rec person. If it comes from PSAC, we'd expect that to be the public safety person. If it comes through land use, we expect it to be the land use supervisor, et cetera. And for any items which fall completely outside that or haven't come through a committee, we just want somebody who, uh, has the responsibility for sort of marshalling it through the process. It does not have to be a sponsor and someone who agrees with it. We all have a role. You know, as a, as a public official, elected official, we have a role to be, um, to be respectful of people's opinions and to, uh, and to sort of follow the public process, even if it's not something we're advocating for. So I think that's the, that's the, um, that's the assumption that we'll take our, our sort of public service aspects of our role and, uh, and marshal something through the process and make sure that, uh, you know, we, we're a point of contact for anyone, as well as staff. We're a point of contact for, um, for anyone, uh, pushing a particular item. We do not have to agree with it.
That makes a lot of sense. I agree with that. That makes a lot of sense.
I think we've all proposed motions that we then vote against, so.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify too, um, uh, if you are assigned to an item, it doesn't mean that you have to be the main presenter. You just, uh, have to have some previous knowledge and maybe introduce the person who is, has the most knowledge and is presenting on it.
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, I was just going to speak briefly to, to this. So, um, obviously we have, we have five, yes, five, five items or five sub items in this section. Um, I just wanted to speak briefly to the whole set of things before we go down one path. So, um, the items we're covering within this item are the, uh, the Community Council Structure, uh, the Out-of-Service Area Requests, the Code of Contact, GBS Rules and Procedures, what we decided to do. The Out-of-Area Requests, we kind of have a framework and we've discussed it, but we decided that, Erin and I decided that we, uh, we weren't really ready to propose anything specific. For that, we have a general framework. We need to do a little bit more work. We have got to a point where we think we can, um, we can propose these, um, changes for the operating procedures. Um, and I would be happy and particularly adding the Code of Conduct, which I think will be useful. So I would be happy, um, to entertain a motion definitely to, um, to vote on the, uh, changes to the operating procedure. We're still going to come back at January's meeting, um, and, uh, make, you know, have a, a proposal, at least we can discuss about, um, out of area, out of service area requests.
And, um, Christina had a comment about following up on the Community Council Structure. I don't know if it's the right time to read it now, or you want, how you want to deal with this as chair.
I, I think, why don't we, um, I would like to go ahead and, um, see if anyone wants to propose a motion on the, uh, on the rules and procedures, which includes the Code of Conduct.
I would make a motion to approve the rules and procedure changes, including the Code of Conduct that Mike and Erin have worked so hard on.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, any discussion specifically on this? Any further discussion, I should say? Okay, I don't hear anything from board members. Any comments from the public?
We do have a comment that Jerry has here, uh, that was sent in.
Sure.
To read it in.
Yes, I think that was actually mostly relevant to the, um, uh, to the out of service area in the Community Council, but we can, you can read it in now, certainly.
Okay, uh, this is from Christina Hendrickson, box nine, seven, eight, uh, item seven. "In October, I participated in a work session regarding structure and changes to address rules and procedures. In this session, residents provided documentation alternatives and recounted specific instances to learn from in crafting a new structure. In November, in Mike Egerton's excused absence from GBOS, Jerry Fox proclaimed his feelings that the current structure was working and no other work needed to be done. I voiced my disagreement with Mr. Fox's feelings and glad to see this is ongoing discussion. I welcome another work session for, that further compares what GBOS is considering against what residents offered as alternatives. For tonight's meeting, I encourage GBOS not to recommend, recognize a motion to pass what has not been further scrutinized by residents."
Okay, well, again, we, that's not the motion that's in front of us. The motion that's in front of us is, uh, for the other parts of the rules and procedures. It doesn't touch the structural aspects. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands up, so I would call for a vote.
Margaret's got it. Margaret's got a comment.
Oh, sure.
This is relatively minor, but I think this might be a good time to take care of it. Article 10, the Conditional Use Process.
Which page is that?
Is page 13 of 19. And it continues to 15. This is all, um, work that, um, Lewis Leonard and I worked on together some time ago. But all of this element is something that pertains to both the Land Use Committee and the Board of Supervisors. And to me, it seems like it would make a really good standalone document, so that it could be modified as well together, as maybe attachment to, instead of a part of the rules and procedures. So I was hoping you would consider that. I think even in the language of it, it says that if one body changes, makes changes to this language, that it needs to be addressed by the other as well.
I would definitely entertain an amendment to, um, take Article 10, relabel it as attachment two and renumber the other, the following articles.
I would make an amendment to, um, make Article 10 a separate attachment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Either from the board or from the community?
See no hands.
Okay, so let's move to a roll call vote on the amendment first.
Okay, uh, Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Uh, Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
Mike Egerton.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. I think the, there's one other thing that, um, I think we, uh, we meant to include and perhaps forgotten the excitement of almost finishing this section. In the preamble, um, I think we were going to include a statement that, um, anything not covered in the rules follows the, uh, anything not specifically addressed in the rules below follows Robert's Rules and Procedures.
Is that page one?
Yeah, it'd be right near the beginning.
I make another, I make a motion for another amendment to include the, at the beginning of the rules and procedures, to include something that states that anything not covered is covered by Robert's Rules of Order.
Second.
I think this is under section two, if I remember correctly.
Section two.
That's what we discussed. Yeah, under rules and procedures. So it, it's sort of a preamble before membership.
Yeah. So it'd be in here.
Yes. Sorry, we, uh, we, we had that discussion. It looks like we've forgot about it. Any discussion on that amendment?
See no hands.
Okay, so we will vote on, roll call vote on this amendment.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
Mike Egerton.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. So now we're back to the main motion with, uh, the two amendments. So, uh, Article 10 is now in a separate, is separate attachment and, uh, we have the preamble at the beginning of section two. Again, I think we've, if there's no more comments on the, um, on the motion, now the amendments have passed. I don't see any, unless you want to say something, Jerry? You're off mute. Okay, um, so again, a roll call vote, please, Kyle.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Jerry Fox.
Yes.
Aaron Boone.
Yes.
Mike Egerton.
Yes.
James Glover.
Yes.
Uh, motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So that addresses two out of these five issues. The Community Council Structure and Procedure for Out-of-Service Area Requests, as I said, we have not touched yet. While we've thought about, or we've done some work on, uh, we're not ready to, uh, present a proposal. What I, what I suggest is that, um, we go ahead and table that, that section to, uh, our meeting in January. And, uh, and cover it there. Uh, we will want to have a discussion at land use as well. So it will go in front of, uh, I'd say GBS first and then land use and GBOS after that.
So do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. I think we'll just, uh, I don't think we do.
You don't.
Um, okay, and, um, finally, the last piece is the Alaska Native Land Acknowledgement. This was originally taken up by the, um, uh, the Chair of the Land Use Committee, and they were unable to, uh, work on it, uh, due to other commitments. So this is still pending on, uh, the Land Use Committee. And I think the, given it's a land acknowledgement, I would rather it, uh, it went through that process first. So, um, at the next, uh, land use meeting, uh, new officers will be elected. And I, I will definitely be proposing that, uh, one of the officers specifically takes, takes up this, uh, this work and commits to getting that, getting that, uh, progressed. Okay, any thoughts or comments on that? Okay, I don't see any hands, so we will move on to, so thank you very much. And, uh, thank you, Erin in particular. So let's move on to item eight, Gerwood Fire and Rescue Updates and Requests. So we have 2020 Budget Forecast and Forecast for 21, uh, 29 Billing for Slums Out of Service, Responses to Portage Bird Indian, Update on the Contract, Vehicle Replacement Schedule or Funding Options to Replace Engine 41 and Status of Area-Wide Bond to Replace Rescue 41. So lots of material to go through here. Uh, who is leading this? Is this, uh, going to be Erin to start or Chief Weston or Kyle?
I could take the, uh, budget stuff for now and then, uh, hand off Chief Weston on, on the other things.
Thank you, Kyle.
So for the 2020 budget, uh, we have recognized that the fire department was probably heading towards a, uh, a shortfall for the operating budget for this year. They have done a great job. They have done a great job to bring down the initial forecast from around a hundred thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars. And that is probably a liberal estimate, just in, in good preparedness, as a fire department should do, to be prepared for the last ten days of the year, which can be some of the busiest days of the year with responses. And so they're gonna, we are gonna move over forty thousand to them as a contractor to finish out the year and then they will provide a detailed summary once your end is closed on how the expenses were used and what was left over. And then the board at last meeting or the meeting before had approved making the capital contribution of seventy four thousand available if the fire department looked like they had a larger shortfall. The funds that aren't being used for the shortfall are going to be moved over to the capital account as the contribution for capital for two thousand twenty, which can be used towards, possibly towards engine forty one in that replacement. As for forecasting for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, that work will begin in January, especially once they have a full year underneath them. And, and you know, there's a lot of variables with that as to when can training restart? When do the COVID restrictions start to relax, things like that, that has affected fire department operations? So that's where we stand at this point and, yep, that's it.
Thanks, Kyle. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
No, just the other items on there. We haven't got the out of area pulse alarm response back from AFD yet. And the contract, you know, we are working towards that. And then I have a presentation on the apparatus replacement schedule.
Yep, I'll bring it up. Let's get to it. Here it is. You gotta shrink it down.
Okay. All right. So to just, you know, I know we're running through this pretty late. The replacement schedule in the next one or two years, we need to replace engine forty one at first structure fire response in the Girdwood Fire Service Area. And then we also need to replace rescue forty one, which is Seward Highway Extrication, which is an area wide service area. And then looking forward, in the next three, four years, we need to replace boat forty one for water rescue and that would be a fundraising activity, since it's outside of the fire service area. We are going to need to look for fundraising or some service, some ability to replace three SUVs, these are the command units. And that funding or grant application would come from the fire service area. And then medic forty one and forty two, area wide EMS, that is handled by the municipality of Anchorage. Then I'll just scroll the next slide. But, and so I just wanted to describe, some people might be confused about what is difference between engine and rescue. So structure fire response, this is what a typical structure fire response looks like, utility forty one, she forty two in command. Engine forty one, first in engine should be staffed by four to six people. Rescue forty one, it also takes on RIT, which is four to six. Tender forty one, tender forty two, tender forty three. You see the idealized staffing in brackets behind each one. Medic one forty one and forty two for the required rehab and patient medical group. And then chief forty one, I take on an accountability role doing the marks on timing. Resources that are available thirty minutes out are truck twelve. So normally on a structure fire response in Anchorage, you automatically get a truck. A truck has specific works that it does or ladder truck. We don't have that, so we have rescue try and do that anyway. So we do have some reduced capacity compared to Anchorage. We have engine nine, engine twelve can come down, nine being on the Armin and twelve being the one you see on your eightieth avenue off the highway. Tender nine and tender ten, a tender is a water tender, and then that two battalion two can come down. And so for a structure fire response, we are needing to replace our nineteen ninety nine, oh, we're gonna, our nineteen ninety nine engine, which is engine forty one, which is the first in engine destruction fires in the Girdwood Fire Service Area. Let me just scroll again. Just so, this was a conversation we were having with municipality of Anchorage staff, because both engines look red. So this closest, that next closest engine is thirty minute response time, which is engine nine. And then again, the reason we're replacing it is end of service life and then funding has to come somehow from the Girdwood Fire Service Area. And we can scroll down to the Seward Highway Response. So Seward Highway responses or response to Seward Highway, we bring utility forty one, which is command, rescue forty one, which is extrication, four to six people. Ideally, sometimes lately, it's been two people. Medic forty one, medic forty two, ideally staffed with three people each. Chief forty one, as I, I'm a blocking vehicle. And then sometimes in command, if we have two secondary, two calls going on at once, like we did with those two accidents not too long ago. And then tender forty two, if we have staffing available. And then next resources that are available, life men or guardian ambulance, guardians down on the Kenai. Life med is sometimes available and sometimes not, because they're also super busy. Engine nine, and they can't fly when there's bad weather. Engine nine, heavy rescue four. The, you see there semi off the side of the road up in Turbine Pass. When we have, we had that Ford Taurus with the back axle of a semi sitting on top of it. That would be a call, an under ride is called. We had heavy rescue come down for that, because we simply didn't have all the jacking equipment that we could use for that. Medic nine can also come down if we have many patients. That two again, and then Anchorage Police, Anchorage Police again are oftentimes twenty to thirty minutes away, which means that we have to initiate blocking of the highway ourselves until police can come and do their traditional role, which is highway safety. And then if we just scroll down a little bit more. So this is rescue forty one. Again, it looks somewhat like engine forty one, but totally different. So it provides life saving vehicle extrication services for patients in the Seward Highway vehicle accidents from mile seventy five to one oh five. And then we'll also go up to mile fifty under a mutual aid agreement, which is reimbursed. If the Kenai Borough needs help, we can just scroll down some more. So this is looking at the compartments of engine forty one, different than, sorry, sorry, the compartments of rescue forty one, different than engine forty one, because you can see there's some hearse tools. And so next closest rescue again is rescue four, thirty five minute response time. That rescue four, station four is on Tudor Road. And then the patient transport time to the hospital once extricated can be thirty five to fifty minutes, depending on where they are, sometimes longer. Sometimes on a difficult extrication, it can take up to twenty minutes, thirty minutes. That under ride I just mentioned, that took a very long time, just because of the complexity of it. The replacement need again, this is end of apparatus service life. It was recently out of service for six weeks, leading up to December, our busiest car accident season. We've already had three fatalities this December for car accidents, so we're super busy. And then we also, what is also important to know is that we are currently using twenty year old extrication equipment. So we have twenty year old equipment, cutting people out of cars actively in service on the Seward Highway, some of which was in service when rescue forty one first came into service in the, in the nineties or in the two thousands, when I was first here on the department. Rescue forty one is unique, I think, in the municipality, because it's often responding in severe adverse weather conditions to head on collisions, often head on collisions, blocks the highway until law enforcement arrives and it requires scene lighting, because you know, it's very dark out there. And it's staffed by our paid on call firefighters and ninety six percent of the responses are outside of the fire service area on the Seward Highway. And I think that might be the last slide. Yep, that's the last slide. So any questions on that presentation?
Thank you, Michelle. You said that there isn't a truck in Girdwood, but there is one that responds in Anchorage. Do we need, is the hotel the only place that needs ladder truck access?
If there was a good, if there was a fully involved condo fire, we would definitely want a truck.
Okay.
And there are some, you know, there are definitely, you know, ideally you have a truck to make rescues off of highs, you know, also to put full water on from above and some other tactical maneuvers. Obviously, we don't have that luxury, but you know, we would call for a truck if we had a, any, any significant multifamily call, we're gonna call for a truck, just sort of mall, we're gonna call for a truck. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from supervisors? Aaron, I see you're off mute.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Yeah, I just wanted to add, since we have Anna on the line and I know Anna's trying to get familiar with our, the big issues in Girdwood. And I know Kyle has brought you up to speed somewhat, but I just wanted to highlight the importance of getting the contract with AFD finalized. And that's really one of our major issues right now. And we had go, we had good momentum before COVID hit and then it kind of got slowed down. And, and then with the change in municipal staff, that it's been a little bit slow. So we really want to get that going again and just, you know, kind of a highlight again. Our EMS has been underfunded for a long time and we've been subsidizing it with our fire monies from Girdwood taxpayers. So that's, that's the major thing that we want to get fixed in the near future. So anything you can do to help would be much appreciated.
Thank you. And through the chair, if I may respond?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Yes, I spoke with Chief Hetrick and got a little bit more information about the, it sounds like about eighteen months or more of negotiation. So we certainly understand the desire to get that done sooner than later. And I think we have a common goal of getting it done before the first quarter budget revisions is what I've been told. So I look forward to working with you all and hopefully we can bring that to, to conclusion fairly, fairly quickly. But I do want to echo the concern about COVID and not causing a delay. And we are very busy right now rolling out the vaccines and the fire department is playing a critical role in that. So just want to reiterate that we will, we will do what we can, but there may be some mitigating circumstances that we can't control. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will, obviously, we'll be, we have a meeting with, with you at the end of, end of January and we'll be definitely discussing it again then. Any other comments from the board? I'm not seeing anything, any from the community?
I do have some things to add related to engine forty one. So we have looked into options on how to fund it. You know, with rescue forty one, it's on the, it's on a path to being on the bond for twenty twenty one. And we feel that, at least from my perspective and probably Chief Weston, is that trying to bond for engine forty one, which would be only funded by the service area and you know how bonding goes, we have to get both the service area and the rest of the municipality to say yes, could be a struggle. And so we've looked into doing equipment loans. The municipality has a loan program set up through KeyBank for items like this, to help purchase apparatuses for different departments. And they have a, a, a structure to do that. And actually, right now, the loan rates are actually really good, after talking with finance. For a seven year loan, it's at one point eight three. Last time we talked, a couple of weeks ago, who knows where it is today, but it's probably within that range. And then for a five year loan, it is at one point six nine, which are actually lower than bond rates on, on these type of things. And we have more flexibility within the service area to do this type of thing, because we have, we do have the ability to put away contributions to capital and then pay it within our operating budget. And so with this, we looked at two options for five and seven years. And if the, you know, Chief Weston is estimating that engine forty one on the high end would be about nine hundred thousand dollars. And if we were able to take what we put away in contributions for capital, which is right around over four hundred thousand, we could use four hundred thousand as a down payment on it, then it would be a loan of six hundred thousand. And if we paid that over five years, our quarterly payments would be thirty one thousand. If we did it over seven years, our quarterly payments, this is four payments a year, would be twenty two thousand dollars there. And so seven years, our annual payment, total annual payment, it will be much less. We pay more interest, but in this case, I think interest over the period would be a difference of fourteen thousand dollars between a five year to a seven year. The interest rate would be lower on a five year in that aspect. So, so these are funding structures that we can do to pay this off. And then in these loans have no penalty for early payoff. So if we get into it and we have extra room in our undesignated account, we can always put a large contribution towards this loan and pay it down faster. This isn't unusual. The, the, the last time we did something like this in the service area was for the community room and library. That was a million dollar loan and it was a five year term to pay, pay back. And I think they actually paid it back in four years, much quicker. So, so these are some options that we have for the board to consider. We're not looking for a decision tonight, but you know, possibly in the January or February, if, if you're not comfortable with January, to make a decision, you know, because right now is a good time to take these low interest rates and, and use it towards apparatus.
Jerry?
Oh, yeah, I just, thanks for all your work, both Chief and Kyle on the engine. And just, it's, you know, it's too bad they're both the same numbers, because it does, they're not both red, I understand. But I don't know if John is still on here, John Wellington, Mr. Wellington, if you're still on here.
I do see. I do see John still.
Well, the rescue forty one is on the bond for the assembly. And we'd like you to kind of make sure that gets pushed through. Are you aware of this?
Yeah, I think we saw it on the CIB list or something like that, so I know it's on there. I think we're voting on what goes on the bond early January. So I don't, I don't know. We'll see. I haven't heard, we didn't hear any pushback on it then.
Just so you're aware.
I think Girdwood has, also has something on their list for their fire department, so that eliminates opposition there.
Say that again, I'm not sure what you meant by that.
As long, well, I think there's also, I think there's something on Girdwood Volunteer Fire Departments or Chugatch, whatever. Michelle might know, but if they have something on the bond, it seems only fair that Girdwood would as well.
Oh, so Chugatch do, yes.
Oh, Chugatch, yes, I got it.
Okay.
Chugatch, yeah.
Okay. And just, yeah, thanks for looking out for that, John. That's all I had. That's my only comment.
Yeah. And so I have a question, if, as we know, not every bond proposal automatically passes. If for any reason the rescue forty one doesn't, would that be a priority over engine forty one? If we end up having to, you know, find a way to fund it some other way? I mean, I know it's an area wide responsibility, not just a Girdwood responsibility, but I'm just wondering what the plan B would be.
Plan, I think we would still go ahead with engine forty one. Rescue forty one, we would then look for, try to put in a federal grant. There's not as many federal grants out there as there used to be and it's super hard to get one. But we would probably start that process. You know, our, the concern with rescue forty one is, you know, it blew that valve. It's, it's, the shop said, wow, you know, we're keeping it together, but they're both sort of, they're both geriatric mobiles that are still working and still in service. But you know, at a certain point in time, they're gonna just blow something that's gonna be catastrophic, so.
I remember how decrepit I was in my twenties, yes.
So, you know, engine forty one, you know, it's older, it's the older one. I would, I would put that, although it's, you know, got low mileage, I would put that ahead, just because. I would, I would put that, although it's, you know, got low mileage, I would put that ahead just because if its pump failed, when we had people in, on an interior attack of a fire, that's an immediate life safety risk, right? So I would rather have that one be replaced first and then look for other opportunities for the highway, which, you know, we're not funded for highway extrication. So I'd rather look for other opportunities for that because I strongly feel that our foot in the door for getting funding for all the vehicle extrication that we do on the highway, which is a, you know, about a quarter of what we do, needs to come from somewhere versus the service area paying for a service which is outside of the service area.
Understood. Thank you. Before we go any further, I just, I would entertain a motion to extend beyond 10 o'clock until 11:00.
I'll make a motion to extend beyond 10 o'clock to 11:00.
Thank you, Jerry.
Brianna, I'll second that.
Thanks. We can, I think we can do this as a voice vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, 5-0. Thank you. Sir, Chief Weston, did you have, I think I interrupted you then. Did you finish? Okay, thank you. So, thank you for that answer. So it sounds like we, we obviously, we already have Rescue 41 on the bond proposal for April. And we will discuss, I think we should continue to discuss it next month, the, the options for Engine 41. I mean, I think I would probably feel comfortable voting next month. We will have that discussion next month. Okay, I, I think we've covered all the items under, all the issues under item eight, unless there was anything more to add or any other comments from the board or public. I'm not seeing any comments, so we will jump to item number nine, Agenda Item LUC 2011 or 2011-04. HLB update on Girdwood industrial park permits. Shelley, if you're still on. Yes.
I think you're on. Shelley Maida, she's tech, she chatted me and she said she had to step away, so.
Okay, we can, we can move on to, let's move on to item 10 and come back to item nine then.
Okay.
I think we do need Shelley's help on item nine. So let's move on to item 10. Review the Boote Company proposal. Hi.
Mike, I'm back.
Oh, hi, Shelley. Let's stay on item nine then.
Well, Kyle is going to read into the record the email that we provided, LUC. That's our statement.
Yeah, let me.
Okay, Kyle.
Sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
I actually asked, I, I, I don't know when agenda items die, but this is really not one that needs to, to stay on here in our opinion. We're, we, we reported on a, on a citizen complaint and just don't feel like this is something that we need to report on every month.
So I have the information from HLB. It's actually included in the reports part of the, the meeting as well. It says, HLB staff report, HLB staff is working to solicit votes from term contractors for the site plan with modifications to the existing permit areas to accommodate improvements. New permits will be issued for a boat and trailer storage the week of December 14th upon payment of fees which are being calculated. Permit renewals will be sent to all the SEs after or permit is prior to the end of the month.
Okay, thank you. So I have a question on this. So the process for permits, is there a, is there a kind of, is there anything in writing or a process people should follow? If, because there is a lot of interest in, in, you know, using, using that land. And I know there's a, there's a subset of, there's a subset of tasks which may be suitable, other things which are subset of uses which are suitable, others which are not. So is there anything in writing? How can members of the community find out what the process is if they're interested in getting a permit?
The HLB work plan and five year program, or program and five year plan has our policies and procedures in there. They're welcome to call me and ask questions. I will say that the only permits that we will be able to, to issue probably as long as I can see into the future will be for very, very low intensity use, which would be parking. Our surface cannot withstand any sort of regular traffic. So somebody who needs to park a boat and trailers, that's, that's acceptable. We can accommodate that. But anything else, you know, is, is probably a long way off. As far as the site plan, waiting, I think Chief Weston, did she leave? Darn it. I do need the weight of her vehicles before I can complete the site plan for the other guys. So we're kind of in a holding pattern on that at this point. I've got to check the compaction tests against her vehicle weights to see if I have a, an appropriate area for her. That's where we stand.
Okay, so the, so the use for basically storage and parking doesn't seem completely consistent with the use of some of the permitted areas at the moment, such as I think even the, the GVSA area is used for, it's not just storage.
About future use.
Okay.
I'm talking about available areas for the.
So new areas.
Yes.
Understood. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the community?
Don't see any.
I don't see any. Okay. Thank you, Shelley.
Sure. And thanks, Margaret, for reading that.
Okay, item number 10. Review the Boote Company proposal for plans and permitting of Stow Drive cross culvert replacement at a cost of $8,680, Kyle.
So this is our third culvert, fish culvert that we would be doing with the Boote Company, who would help us with design and permitting. They would basically do the surveying and design for replacing this culvert, culvert at Stow Drive. Right now it's undersized and not adequate fish passage. We would bring it up to standards like we did over on Aliesca View at three different locations. And so this would cover survey services, hydraulic services, which review the flow and make sure we have a properly sized and design and permitting so that the, the new culvert meets the fish passages requirements. And then permitting with US Corps, Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Fish and Game, both for habitat and then water extraction during construction. So the total cost would be $8,680 and Boote would be handling all of it.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand this document. So this is just for the design work and work and permitting and things around that, not for the actual construction?
No, our construction would be handled by our, our road contractor.
Okay. And is that within the current road contractor? Would that be additional cost?
No, it would be within, we would actually use up remaining funding. We have to use up remaining funding on culvert replacement we have from the state. And so, and that's a good point. This money would come out of that. It wouldn't come out of our operating costs. It would come out of a grant we have from the state for $30,000. And then any equipment like culverts, the time and money to the contractor would be paid out of that grant.
So this 8680 comes out of the grant?
Correct. It wouldn't come out of the operating budget.
And construction costs. Okay, thank you.
Construction costs as well.
Understood. Any other questions from the board?
I guess I'm wondering, are we, do we need to vote on it if it's, even though it's coming out of grant money?
Yeah, it's still coming out of your 406 account, so we need for approval from the GVOS to use those funds.
Okay.
Jerry, did you have something to say?
No, but I'd make a motion to approve, I would make a motion to approve the proposal. I gotta see it here, for plans and permitting for Stow Drive cross culvert replacement engineering at a cost of $8,680.
I second the motion.
Thanks, Brianna. Any other discussion on the motion? So I would ask my normal question of how does this compare to the, to the comparable costs for the other culvert replacements?
It's, it's right in line with it. It's probably just a little bit less because the other ones, one phase was two, was three culverts. And the next one was one culvert. So this really lines up with the one culvert we did last summer.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote. So can roll call a vote please, Jerry? Please, Kyle.
Yes, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Pass is 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 11. Review the Boote Company proposal for the Iditarod National Historical Trail Phase 3 feasibility study at a cost of $22,240. I did hear a comment about this before.
Yes. So on this one, I'm sorry, I just must have skipped it, not showing it on here. May not be in here. Yeah, we may not have the paperwork in here. Let me see if I can pull it up for you real quick because we want you to see this. Let's see here.
My recollection is we were not going to act on this. Because it's within the.
Yeah, I may not pull this up because we're, we are going to postpone this indefinitely. We are going to try to follow the route of working with DOT. This broad, the, the area of trail that we want to improve is right within the zone of the prospective work for improving the intersection of Aliesca Highway and, and Seward Highway. And that bridge is within their zone. So we're going to follow that avenue and play that out to see if we can make it work that way.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? In the case, we'll, we'll pull it and not act on that. Okay, item number 12. Review the Boote Company proposal for Winter Creek Trail pedestrian bridge over Eglise Creek, the feasibility study at a cost of $30,620, as recommended by the Girdwood Trails Committee by vote of 27 in favor, zero opposed, 10 abstaining.
Correct. So this would be examining options and feasibility for putting a bridge to connect the Winter Creek Trail, which is now currently served by the hand tram. As part of the hand tram review and safety improvements, one thing that was suggested or requested by the GVOS was to see a proposal for a feasibility study on putting a bridge in as alternative crossing for, for this portion of the trail. And so what we have in front of you here is a scope of service from each, from the Boote Company to provide base mapping, preliminary bridge, concept development. The, the bridge feasibility design analysis, a cost estimate documentation and a presentation to GVOS plus its subcontractors. They would have, bring in structural engineers and, and, and other consultants to help with this. So they wouldn't be the prime, they would be the primary on it. And they use subs to do the more geotechnical review and structural associated with putting a bridge into this area. And so in the end, what we would get is feasibility of options to how we could cross the creek and, and what areas and what locations and what possible design ideas there would be out there to make that happen. The total cost on it would be $30,620.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions or comments from the board? Jerry?
My first comment would be, and I made this the last time, I believe that, you know, if we had to fund this ourselves, this is just for an estimate of feasibility study. As a service area, we probably wouldn't be able to fund it. But my understanding is that this would be a good candidate for some sort of grant application. Kyle or Margaret, can you talk to that?
Yes, so we would, we would, well, having a feasibility study would give us backing on what concept and cost bridge would, would be for the, for this crossing, which would be very helpful in, in, in going for grants. We would look towards the federal government due to the fact that the, the trail on each end is managed by the US Forest Service. And so either through a flat, flat grant or the Great Outdoor Act, which is a five year funding to Alaska, this could fall within those areas as the National Historic Iditarod Trail is, is in this corridor. And the US Forest Service is very favorable of a bridge crossing to the point that they may be interested in taking over the long-term maintenance of the bridge. I do think that the service area would probably need to have maybe some sort of contribution if we follow those avenues as a partnership through our MOA, our memorandum of understanding or MOU with them. So I think that, that could be a possibility going forward that, that we would have some sort of buy-in with this. But for the most part, we would hope to seek most of the grant funding, the grant funding for it.
So the one issue that I have is I worry that we're just throwing away the $30,000 if we can't get a grant. But at the same time, I think I'm supportive because, you know, the Trails Committee is supportive and it's a great resource for the community long-term. And if we could get a grant, it'd be great. So I guess I would be supportive, but I'm just worried about throwing away $30,000. Because I, we were talked earlier, I can't remember what you said, but probably over half a million dollars for a bridge, right, at least?
I probably would say this, I would probably say that at least that, probably starting at a half million dollars, just due to remoteness and, and the, so the ruggedness of the area.
Yeah.
But you know, one thing is if you don't do the study, the answer is always no. So if, if the community wants to answer this question, then this is, this is what we would do.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Jerry. Any other questions from the board? If not, I have a question, which is why now? Why is, you know, we, we haven't, we haven't, my understanding is we haven't got a definite, a definite commitment from the municipality to, to pursue our intent with the hand tram changes, the safety improvements, the hand tram. So it seems like the focus should probably be on that rather than the alternatives. I wonder, actually, Kyle, can you give us an update on where it is, where we are with the hand tram?
Okay, do you want me to answer the question first or do the hand tram update?
Hand tram update first and then answer the other one.
Okay, so where we are right now with the hand tram is we will be pursuing a discussion with administration in January. We will probably discuss it one more time with Goro Trails Committee. But we will pursue, pursue a discussion with administration, which would be leadership from probably legal, risk management, city manager, building safety, and discuss the safety improvements. We were all set to do that and in the day, we're actually set to do it, COVID hit. And everything was canceled and put aside and this, this has been very low priority. And we would try to work in, you know, it still sounds like the city, you know, as we well know, the city is very busy still with the COVID response. But we recognize that if something was to happen this summer, we need to start the planning now.
Correct.
So that's where we stand right now with it. So.
Thank you for that update.
Doing that. As to the reason why now, even if we hadn't shut down the hand tram, I still think it is something that the community should explore. The usage on that trail is, is at capacity and beyond for what the hand tram can handle. You know, if you show up there on a Saturday, there's at least a half hour to hour wait on each side to cross. And half the riders go across, they get on, they go back. The hand tram, besides the, the two incidents that happened in 2019 to users out there, is having a hard time keeping up. We respond more to repairs from overuse than. We respond more to repairs from overuse than than anything out there. And it's starting to become quite a burden upon our small department to keep up with it. And so it's it's well recognized that the that this has become a bottleneck in this well designed and well developed trail that we have out there. When the hand tram was originally designed, it was mud hole after mud hole in east direction to get to the hand tram. So those who didn't want to get their white shoes wet or muddy didn't go and those who felt more rugged went and that's it handled that level of usage. But now we have a very nice trail on each side and it's just delivering people after people and it's become very much a tourist attraction out there. And so I do think that the community needs to explore this option.
Thanks Kyle. Any other questions from the board? Or from the community? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay. I think if anyone's interested in in making a motion.
I was waiting for somebody else, but I'll make it. I would propose a motion to fund a Winter Creek Trail Pedestrian Bridge over the Glacier Creek feasibility study at a cost of $30,620.
Thank you Jerry. I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion itself?
I have a quick one for Kyle. I assume this would come out of Parks and Rec?
It will come out of the Parks and Rec Capital Fund, the 406 account.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, I'm kind of in two minds about this because it just seems like a, it seems a little, there's no time that I don't feel there's a time urgency on this. There are another task we're doing. I'm still, I'm still not quite decided which one I'm going to vote. It'll be a runtime decision, I guess. I'm just not, it does seem like a lot of money for something we've got no Garrett, well, we've got no, we've really got no planned path for funding other than, you know, hope we get grants. I'm just kind of a little uncomfortable about it. I'll just leave it at that. Any other comments?
I guess my thought is the sooner we do this and get more information, the more opportunity we, the sooner we would have opportunity to apply for grants and knowing that like Kyle said, the GAOA is for five years. So, you know, any design and implementation is going to take a long time. So it would just give us a little more time if we do it now.
A good point. Any other comments from the board? I see a comment from a Kaylee Harrison from the public.
Um, yes, I just want to say that in the meetings that I've attended through trails and land use where any of this has been discussed, it's always been widely supported. So while I am hesitant because it's a big expenditure without a guarantee. I feel like this is something the public does support. The community really does want the hand tram open and would really like to see a bridge across. So I guess that's that's my comment.
Thank you Kaylee. Shelley, I see your hand up as well.
Thank you Mike. So as the representative of the landowner, I'll tell you, nothing is worse than waking up in the morning and hearing that somebody died on your property. You know, I think Kyle has pointed out a whole lot of of really important facts that, you know, the hand tram just isn't going to support the the demand. And I'm starting to try to direct some of my tour groups away from this and maybe over to Virgin Creek Falls or to the Beaver Pond Trail or just something to reduce the traffic on this. So I would just urge you to support this until Kyle has plans or a feasibility study, he can't go out for grants. So it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. You, you know, it'd be nice to know that you've got $500,000 sitting there waiting for you, but until he has this this study done, you know, he really can't go out and pursue those things. So I ask you to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Failing that, I think we should call for the vote.
Okay, Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
In support, yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay. We are now on item number 13. Discuss and approve the Alberg repaving proposal.
So we went back and a quick recap on this. We came to you last year and proposed a a repave of the entire road from the T with the Alieska Highway to our cutoff zone, which is just before Alieska Hotel, the zone that we had just repaved a few years ago. Through the process of review, the traffic and engineering department wanted us to also do the bike path and install swoops on the bike path where it intersected with Cortina, Brighton and Davos. And at that point, we decided at this point in time, we didn't have the funding to do that. And two, we wanted to really, really examine before we do any more sweeps on anything about doing that. And so our grant funding does expire this year. And so we shortened the project to start just past Aspen Mountain and and go down to the end section, which would be at that cutoff location just before the hotel, as I described earlier. The, this would be a full grind of six inches of asphalt and then relaying that asphalt, recycled asphalt as road base and then paving over that with a standard two inch. And widening in the corners to help support the shoulders a bit and giving a little bit more shoulder in the straightaways. And so this would be a base bid, a base estimate we're seeing is about $441,000. We have two, we have one add alt, which would be replacing the guard rail in both locations. If you've seen lately, that guard rail is past its age. And so the estimate right now that we have is $68,000 for that. And then the right away monuments. This is a requirement of the municipal surveyor. Right away monuments would have to be put into the asphalt when the project is completed, which is standard. And that is an estimate from the engineer. We would use a term contractor to do that work. And our MOA surveyor estimates have to be around $12,000. So the total of the of the basic bid would be $521,000. Or in, that would be for the estimate of the project. There was a, oh, go ahead. I'll, I'll, I'll bring, there was a comment we see, but we
Yeah. Can you remind me again, how much of that comes from grant funding?
A hundred and 12,000 would come from grant funding for the pavement aspect of it. The guard rail is not included.
Okay, and the balance is from our from our capital?
Correct. Do it come out of our capital account?
Okay, any comments from the board?
Um, just a question for Kyle. Is that, is the grant funding currently in our capital account or?
It is. It's in our capital account.
And if we don't use it, it will?
Go back to the state.
Okay.
They're starting, now the grants are starting to get called in and I can understand why. So if we don't use them this year, we will lose them.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, actually Kyle, can you read the the comment we've gone from the public and then we'll move to any other comments from the public?
Sure. This is from Christina Hendrickson, box nine seven eight. This relates to item 13, which we're talking about. $25,000 for a survey. Huh. Recommended, recommend procurement and Kyle script RFIs, RFQs and RFPs within GVSA specifically to eliminate the survey costs and rid taxpayers of this cycle of overpriced surveys related to construction. So I looked into this item and and my initial thoughts were similar to our engineer who's handling the engineer estimate on this. It's not wise or for the municipality to separate out the construction survey. The construction survey should be done by the contractor as then they are held liable that if something does go wrong and they don't meet the specs or they, you know, a quick example is they don't put the road in the right, in the middle of the right of way where it's supposed to be on center line. Then that responsibility is upon the contractor to fix it. If we were due to do the construction survey and our surveyor did something wrong, then we would be liable to pay the contractor stop work fees and delay fees as we resolve those construction survey issues in that aspect. So it's very common for when a contractor, a, a, a project goes out the bid, that construction survey is part of it. I can understand Christina's frustration with this because when we did the pedestrian flashers, the construction survey was highly overpriced for that. And that was because we had a, a contractor, a primary contractor on there who was an electrical engineer. And so they were making their margin within things that they could, which was the construction survey and things like that. And then they subbed out all the electrical work, which was the bulk of the project to a electric contractor to do that. And those were within costs. So, so the the 25,000 is an estimate. When bids come in, we could see it being higher. But that is the the aspect of bidding and and putting all the own, all the responsibility on the contractor to complete the project.
Okay, so what's the, what's the expected schedule for this? So if we approve going out, if we approve the proposal, when would it be out for bid?
We are going to bid it at the end of, at the end of January, the beginning of February. And then we would like to start, start construction when the ground allows in May to get ahead of tours and season and the potential opening of the of the new Nordic Spa.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? I'm not seeing anything. Jerry, did you have something to add?
I was just ready to make a motion to approve the Alberg repave proposal as provided by Kyle.
I'll second it.
Okay, actually I do see Kaylee's hand up.
I was just going to thank Kyle for adjusting this so that we're avoiding the sweep issue, but still maintaining the possibility of getting the improvement. So thank you for that work.
No one is looking forward to another sweep discussion. Okay, yeah. Any comments on any discussion of the of the motion, Brianna? I see you're off mute. Okay. Okay, hearing no discussion, let's move to a vote.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
And motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14, agenda item LUC two zero zero nine dash zero five. Revised Letter of Non-Objection for Liquor License Renewals to Include Tesoro to Go Mart. Do you want to take this, Margaret, or shall I?
Yeah, I can talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
You all took a look at the list and so the land use committee. And we prepared a letter of non objection that had everybody else, but we missed the to go mark. In the final document, the GBOS approved. And so we just need to catch up and get the to go mark included in the letter of non objection. We've had no objections and the information was complete through the land use process. It just fell off on the final document. So we've heard no objections. And so this is really just fixing a clairvoyant error.
Yep, there about 35 people didn't spot. Including me multiple times. I think we'll definitely entertain a motion to revise the letter of non objection.
So moved. This is Brianna.
Okay, do I hear a second? Excellent Jerry. Any comment from the board? Or the public? Okay, let's call for a vote.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Aaron, Aaron Boone? She might have to step out. Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. Item number 15, discuss and vote on towing impound lot for New Year's Eve parking.
Yeah, I don't have a packet presentation, but out of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, they made a recommendation to look in and present to GBOS having a tow truck stationed here for New Year's evening to deal with any parking infractions or in particular, blocking access on roads to EMS apparatuses. I did receive a proposal from Fred's Towing. We've been working with them quite a bit here for other towing issues in Gurwood. And they proposed for a thousand dollars, they would have a tow truck here for the majority of the night from about 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It would be on holiday pay and that would provide room and board for the driver. So the driver would stay overnight. We would provide a area for impound and and if they had to impound a vehicle, they could impound on site and the next day tow it to Anchorage if it was not claimed within the period allowed. So we're looking to the board to see if they want to approve this. If they do, we would use funding out of our operating budget for police services.
And we spend, what, 50% of that comes from 2020, 50% comes from 2021, I guess.
Yeah.
Six, yeah.
It will be an interesting procurement to finalize. We would ask for, actually for a little bit more than, we would ask for $1,500. And that would allow us to get temporary fencing, fencing brought in to create an impound section. We don't foresee it being a lot of cars, but we would have enough areas that they'd be able to secure a car inside.
I think you mentioned the location of the impound would be temporarily on our GVSA lot.
Well, we would examine that or we would examine also doing it here behind the community center.
Oh, okay.
And using the parking lot back here.
Okay. Understood. Any comments from the board?
I just have a question. Sorry, I missed the first part. But was this, who who brought this forward or was it recommended by someone?
Public Safety Advisory Committee. They they had a long discussion about it and they made a motion for me to investigate it and then bring it to GBOS to see if GBOS would approve.
Okay, thanks.
I was at the Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting, James Glover here and Kyle, nice work on putting this all together in such short order. That was just last week and you know, just to keep people away from parking in front of those fire hydrants. And I think it's a good plan moving forward on such short notice.
One question, do we have commitment from WPD that they would, they would do the necessary things for any car towing?
Yes, yeah. And we, Chief Ashay and I had a full discussion about it post Public Safety Advisory Meeting and and they would definitely do as much as they can to alert the drivers to move. But they would also cite and then have it towed if they were unable, they're not going to spend a lot of time because it's going to be a busy night, but they would cite and tow the vehicle if there was no response.
Okay, I have a slight concern about whether it would incentivize people to move vehicles when they perhaps shouldn't be driving. But you know, that's a that's a slight concern. If it's, if it's blocking fire hydrants, if it's blocking access to emergency vehicles, the vehicle needs to be moved.
Well, I guess we'll ask the, I'll ask chief to address that. Most likely if they find that the person's intoxicated and most likely the vehicle probably have to be towed.
Right, right.
Not so many that could do it.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Any other comments from the board or the public?
This is Brianna. I think it's something that I hope we could implement in the future too on other holidays.
Great. Would you be interested in making a motion, Brianna?
I would. I would like to make a motion to approve the Fred's Towing to come to Gerwood on New Year's Eve and the presentation Kyle made.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thanks, Erin. Any other discussion specifically on the motion? Not hearing any, let's move to a vote.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Erin Boone?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Now we can move on to new business. Item 16, agenda item LUC two zero one two dash zero six. Request for, required, this says request for LUC recommendation for GBOS action regarding the, I guess it's a a request from LUC for GBOS action regarding the Gerwood Land Trust. Brittany Blackledge speaking to this. Who is here to speak to this? Brittany, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so we're just presenting today with our update with the Connex for for our recycling center. So we have tried to work with solid waste services to see that we could put it next to the transfer station. We are getting some feedback right now that that may not be a feasible option just due to the spacing and they're gonna have to test for ground compaction on different areas around there. So another potential option will be working with the brewery potentially. So we talked about potentially putting it there for the time being, but we are hoping to present just to continue working with the transfer station and HLB and seeing if we could find a space there in the long term with ground compaction tests.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? And notes will be presented again before we do anything. Okay, I just do have one quick question, Brittany. So what, when this comes in front of us again, what specific action will you be asking for?
So, well, I guess it would depend on, pardon me, if we're gonna be working directly with the transfer station or there at the brewery. So if we, what we'll be asking for is the support of moving forward with having it as a temporary site there next to the transfer station. And in the meanwhile, waiting for the ground compaction and as a mobile site. And then if not, we would yeah, and then our backup option, like you said, is to have it at the brewery and that will most likely be a more of a short term option moving forward.
Okay, I see. I see just they'll, I don't see any board members with their hands up. I do see Shelley and Crystal. So Shelley.
Brittany mentioned working with HLB. I have let the land trust know in no uncertain terms that the industrial park is not an option. We can't accommodate something that has, you know, even five trips a day. It's my understanding that solid waste also said that that wouldn't be a suitable area. I haven't heard that they were performing any compaction tests. But Susannah may have not included me on, on the most recent communications. I don't know. Solid Waste Services has asked me for alternatives. While neither one of the ones I presented are HLB properties, I, I have advised the land trust that, that they will need a land use permit and it's my understanding that this is not just collection, but it's also manufacturing. So that's where it's going to get a little sticky. But the two places I recommended was either the school or the resort parking lot. But again, like I said, land use is going to, to be a problem, I think, with, with most locations.
Actually, Crystal.
Yeah, so we, in speaking with solid waste services and, and from feedback from Shelley, we had heard that AWU has a contract with solid waste services where solid waste services has something to do with additional uses. So I had requested to see that contract so we could see what solid waste services and the additional uses might potentially be allowed. We do understand that we're gonna need a land use permit. So, but it's important for us to know exactly where we're gonna be before we apply for one. So the, the transfer station, interestingly enough, is Gerwood open space. So that's interesting in itself. And, you know, in, in getting some feedback from the, the leases down at the industrial park, they feel like, you know, maybe not being so close to the transfer station, but in, in that grass area right behind the, the industrial park sign might be an option. So I know that HLB, you know, I would say that we, we were trying to work with solid waste services per what Shelley had suggested. And then the compaction is in regards to phase two of the industrial site. So my general feeling is waiting years for compaction isn't equitable for our community. We need more than five lots to be available for industrial uses. That equates to a point 002% of the population of Gerwood that would have an industrial opportunity. So I think that we need to be looking at ways of how we can use that land and if, you know, if, is parking going to be the only thing that's allowed in phase two and, and and if not, what else might be allowed in phase two? And in the meantime, we're going to be dealing with, it sounds like private property owners to help solve more of our community issues such as Aliaska and Little Bears also kind of helping out.
Shelley, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, with regard to phase two of the industrial park, even if it was compacted, I think the land use permit process would prove unsuccessful for that area. Any, any intensive use in that area is going to require full development. So that there are utilities, there are adequate roadways and turnarounds. With regard to behind the Gerwood Industrial Park sign, I do believe that's in the right of way and so you can't put a Connex in the right of way.
I, I would, so I guess that the, the ask for next.
You want to respond, Crystal?
Yeah, sorry. Through the chair, I would just say be expecting a request for permission to operate a recycling facility in GIP and GC10. So the, and or it might be a text amendment so that we can, we can operate at the brewery. So I just, you know, there is no, there is no community pushback about having a recycling center. There is community support for it. And so I would ask for the majority land owner to really help us. It would be the, the primary ask and anyway, the, the precious plastic model is really awesome. I encourage anybody to go look into it further. And if you want to know more about what Community Land Trust is working on, go to gerwoodlandtrust.org.
So could you say a little bit more about the, about the, the status of land use permit? Cause I'm, I'm definitely a little confused and I know you've been working with, with Z Architects. So what, what's kind of known at the moment and what's still unclear?
Well, what's known is that we did get a determination from planning that we didn't need to do a pre-app, pre-application because they determined that the uses was manufacturing and recycling. And so really the only ones that are, is permitted is, is industrial lot. So we would need to be at the industrial lot. I reached out to Redman. We've been, we've been playing phone tag, but it's more like I'm reaching out to people that are in the community that are already users and asking to use some of their space rather than having access to, you know, public land for community purposes.
Okay, so I think one of the complexities might be that, at least by reading of the code, there's nowhere permitted in Gerwood for recycling. It's just not in, it's not in one of the allowable uses. Again, I don't know if you've, you've got, if planning said anymore about that. So that would, that would seem to require a text amendment. Wherever it goes.
Yep. I, I mean, yeah, that, the land, you, everybody here knows that the land use code doesn't make a lot of sense for Gerwood. So the fact that there's parcels that are not allowable for any use is interesting.
By the, did specific uses which were not envisioned, you know, 18 years or whenever, I don't remember when the last time the zoning was looked at, but it's, it's, I think, in the early 2000s, mid 2000s. Shelley, you have your hand up again, I think, unless that's from previous.
That's from previous.
Okay, that's okay. Okay. Erin?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask. I don't know a ton about what, what will go inside the Connex, but from what I understand, you're collecting recycle, recyclable materials. I know that in the past, before my time on the board, but in the past of Gerwood, the Muni, I think, has put recycling bins like near the, near the transfer station. And I don't know if, it sounds like what you're looking for is more than just collection. You, you actually have a machinery or equipment to process it. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. So it would be all in the Connex, we would do the collection and then the precious plastics is the machine that would process them and then we would have, it would basically turn all the plastic into a shred and then we could use that shred into molds. And so we've planned this out based off of, so this model that has been done, you know, based out of Finland. He's open sourced the machinery. We have somebody right now to develop the machinery and we have other people in the community willing to work with this as far as, you know, daily visits to, we are running the entire station essentially. And we also have somebody that's working on her senior project that would be towards auditing the amount of plastic that we're bringing in and regulating it as well. So a few different parts to that, but yes, it would be collection and processing and then reuse into a new mold.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know if it would help or, you know, but is there a possibility of like, if you separated out the collection versus manufacturing that that could open up more options for where you put those things?
Potentially. Right now we just have one Connex that was donated to us via Matson for, and so that's been our plan is to do all this together. But yes, it is possible, I guess, potentially that we could just, something that we haven't considered is just having a separate collection site. Right now, obviously, we have some collections, you know, being done in front of the old Thritwood. That same process is what we are planning to carry on to the Connex. We thought that the transfer station would be most convenient because people are already dropping off their waste. So that would be very conducive to have one stop shop for the town. But we could potentially put the machinery portion elsewhere. We just don't have a place for it right now.
I'll give a little input on the recycling. And what I remember was that it was a community driven thing and solid waste services did put in a collection bin. But they required somebody to be there to help make sure that people sorted it right. They had a, a large problem with cross contamination and so they spent a lot of money hauling material back and forth on special loads to find that once they got it, it was, it was all mixed up. Which then just made it for them impossible to get it clean and they just taking it to the dump. So, and what happened was they just lost, lack of volunteers to be there on Saturdays and Sundays at the transfer station for a certain amount of time and make sure that people sorted their recycling right, which is a very common problem with recycling across the US.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, Brittany.
That, that's our plan right now is to currently manage that and regulate the hours. So the hours that were open to have somebody onsite to go through the sorting process. The other opportunity would be that artists that are looking to use this plastic for remolding would then be volunteering their hours. So we, and we think that that would also help to pull for the resource for volunteer man hours. But we already have several people interested and obviously that would all be taken care of it when it'd be an unmanned site.
I was just gonna say, I think what, what you said there, Brittany, that the, there's a, there's motivation if people are using the, the recycled material to sort of create and to basically make products which they then sell, there's a motivation for them to get the, you know, while they're there to, to make sure stuff is, is sorted appropriately. Crystal?
I just, I wish Emma Kramer was here because she was part of the recycling group, which was in the mid 90s, I believe. Maybe late 90s. And so a long time ago was the last time that recycling was addressed. And I think that recycling has become more and more common. People know, you know, understand better about cleaning, cleaning things off before you recycling, et cetera. So it's been a long time since then. And she also mentioned that it wasn't a lot because of a lack of volunteers. It was a liability issue with solid waste services. So I think that I'm just hopeful that this is a really great model and that it just doesn't die because of old rules or old expectations.
And then another part to highlight too is that, I mean, I, I think outside of it just being a recycling center, the idea that it's to be almost like a visual display. It would have, you know, a mural on the outside so that kids could come and take pictures next year. That's, I think, on the previous page of this right up. And that way kids can actually see the process, you know, we can do tours for them to see, you know, the process of recycling and turning it into something new. Could be, we could be working in conjunction with that with like Little Bears or the school to do, you know, tour dates and have it be a very involved process. And so potentially also growing the volunteer base from there. So I think it's just a matter of you know, having community land space that we can do a community project that I think many people have been excited about, you know, having the opportunity for that here within Gerwood.
It sounds like there are, there are still some practical issues to deal with. And, you know, the location is obviously one of those and potentially some paperwork around text amendment. I have a, we only have eight minutes left and we still have several items to try and get through tonight. So James, you have a comment. We're not acting on this. So I'd like to close down the discussion, but James, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to mention quickly that we currently, we own the property there where the current recycling is there in Gerwood in the town center there. And I thought that Erin's comment might be helpful to you guys, Crystal and Brittany, that our offer still stands, you know, we could temporarily store the facility there, but what Erin had touched on and maybe tie in with Shelley that a possibility of having a manufacturing. and maybe tie in with Shelley, that a possibility of having the manufacturing on a temporary permit down at the industrial site with very light traffic could be a possibility and doing the collecting there, either, you know, where the recycling currently is now or at the brewery or some other private land until these issues could be sorted, maybe an opportunity there. That's all I had.
If you have a quick response, Shelley.
Yeah, I just want to, I can speak for Solid Waste, I think, and say that they're definitely interested in helping out. That there's a process and, you know, I think there's zoning issues that are going to have to be worked out. So it's not going to happen overnight, but they definitely want to work with the community and, and help you find an outlet for recycling.
Okay, thank you. As I said, we weren't acting on this and we've got very little time left, so I'm going to move on. Kyle, is there, the last three items left, we may not be able to cover more than one. Is there anything that's time critical?
No, we are just putting on there is introduction. So first quarter revisions, we'll be talking about over the next two months.
Okay. GBOS nonprofit recreation grants, we obviously had some, we had a work session about that. Does anyone want to make any comments?
One thing I'll point out is Margaret's just incorporating the comments that she's received into it. So if anybody has additional comments, please get them to her because we'll probably have a larger discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, we are galloping through these items. And the last one, item nineteen, sorry.
I'm seventeen. Are you asking for money for, more money for summer staffing?
No, I'm going to explain what we're going to do there. I won't be asking for money. We're using the grant money from the CARES Act.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so seventeen, we've kind of introduced. Eighteen is continuing, item nineteen, topics from OA GBOS quarterly meeting.
Anything to get right now?
We obviously have a discussion to, we have a discussion to have about fire department.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think we can discuss it, that we can cover other items on LUC and GBOS next month.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for sticking to almost eleven o'clock. And thanks very much for the efficiency on the last three items. I'm pleased we got a chance to discuss sixteen in more detail. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn and thanks, Mike. Good meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Erin. Kyle.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for sticking with us.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John and you. Bye.
Good night.